Three video. I'd like to call the March 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Before we begin our meeting, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all again for being with us this evening. I'll ask anyone who's got a cellphone with them to please turn it off or put it on silent mode. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. We come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions from any Commissioners about any item on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we're now going to take public comment. And Mr. Joyner, could you tell us if we have folks signed up for public comment tonight?
Yes, we do have about five indicators. We'll combine it with public comment, public standing, public meeting, public comment section.
Okay, so we're going to take general public comment now, and then when we hold the hearings, then we'll take additional public comment at that time. Okay, thank you.
And you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ken Jones. I live in Swananoa, and I'm calling in from the Veterans for Peace Vigil at the Vance Monument, so I'm outdoors. Please forgive the ambient noise and occasional honking for peace that go by. I'm calling to give you an update on your investment in the Pratt-Whitney and Raytheon agreement. I go out there quite often and look at what's happening on the ground, and I highly recommend you do that.
Caller, caller, I'm sorry, I apologize. We need you to start over. Your three minutes will begin again. If you can start with your introduction.
Okay, this is Ken Jones. I live in Swananoa, and I'm calling to you from the Vance Monument where I'm standing out with Veterans for Peace. We do a weekly vigil here. Please forgive the noise and the occasional honk for peace. I want to call, I wanted to call to update you on what's happening out of the Pratt-Whitney site as a matter of your investment in the agreement. If you haven't been out there to see what's going on, I highly recommend you do. Maybe Jack Cecil can take you for a tour. What's happened is clear cutting of all the trees, especially up top where the plant is going to be, it looks like mountaintop removal. And also they bulldozed a road, all the trees are gone for road, and they're starting to build a bridge there now with lots of boulders getting thrown into the river. So it looks terrible, but I'm sure when all is said and done, it will look very civilized. So there's that. I also want you to know, if you don't already, that there's some good news and bad news about Pratt-Whitney and Raytheon. The good news is that Raytheon just received a huge arms deal, thanks to the Biden Administration, with Egypt and also with Chile. So if you're invested in Raytheon, there's, there's good news there. The bad news is that the Pratt and Whitney engines, which power commercial airlines as well as the F-35, have proven on three occasions, at least in the recent past, failures. We've had two occasions, one in Colorado and one in the Netherlands that were just reported this month, and where debris fell on the ground from burning engines, and there was one in Japan not long ago. So Pratt-Whitney is not doing so well as far as your investment goes. I want you to know that a group that I'm part of, that you know of, Reject Raytheon, has been doing vigils in opposition to the deal. Most recently, we delivered a letter in Biltmore Park to Jack Cecil, and I'd like you to hear at least part of it. There's some questions that we asked him, because it applies to you too. And we asked them, I hope you're going to have some oversight, Commissioners, on this. We asked them how he's going to ensure that the environment is protected, the soil, the river, the air, the wetlands, about waste removal from the plant.
Thirty seconds remaining, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, thank you. And we asked them about what safety precautions are now in place or will be in place because of the recent failures of the Pratt and Whitney engines. We know that there's expansion in the works for the Biltmore Farms. There are other businesses that the EDC is recruiting, so we want to know about that. We want transparency. And most of all, we want to know how your values about sustainability mesh with having an industry that's part of the rural economy and a major user of fossil fuels. So that's it for me. Thanks for your time. That's it for me. Thanks for your time.
Caller, you are live. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Elsa, and I live in Arden, quite close to where the Pratt and Whitney plant is going to be. My comment is going to sort of coincide with Ken's comment there. And I have to say, it is rough driving past that every day. You know, driving past that when I go to work. And thinking about what that means for, for our, for our county, what that is going to be creating, and what that says about us as people. I have a really hard time dealing with that, and I think a lot of people do. And when I was out there protesting against this disgusting plant that you're allowing to be built, and I was giving out pamphlets to people and telling them what's going on, those that actually talked to me could not believe it. They could not believe what you are allowing to be done to our beautiful river. And, you know, I really think that you should remove the incentives that you have offered to Pratt and Whitney, because that money needs to be going towards the community. That money needs to be going towards your constituents, towards a Green New Deal, towards protections for marginalized people, towards COVID relief. There are so many things that this community needs, and a murderous company that destroys the environment everywhere they go is not one of them. And the fact of the matter is, they claim that they'll be creating jobs, they'll be bringing jobs here, but how many jobs will really come from the people in this community? How many people will follow their company to a new place? And, you know, how can we guarantee that even? And that, so it's just, it just seems like an empty promise and just kowtowing to the military industrial complex, and it's really disappointing. Thank you.
Roger, you are live.
Yes, this is Roger Erlich, Kandler. When we came, it's going on a decade now, to, and purchased our farm, we, in Kandler, we were really thinking, besides our love of the mountains and the creative economy and the local, the spirit of local autonomy here, that the local, our local representatives would take seriously the spirit of mountain independence and resent us and make sure that our interests, that you were not investing us in sort of large corporate, just going with the dollars. I don't think that that's, I think that Asheville and Buncombe County are better than that. I think that everybody on the Commission is very familiar with socially responsible investing, and I think that there needs to be a huge about-face for the Commissioners to not be hugely hypocritical and be disinvesting. The local government investment pool could be one example of that. However, you're asking, much like we got blindsided with the Pratt and Whitney, and I'm afraid our blindsided with the Borg-Warner deal, which as far as I know, may have horrible environmental and social impacts like the Pratt-Whitney-Raytheon deals. Very concerned that you're considering approving a deal, going in county taxpayers in with Wake County, which may overpower our interests in investing public money without any social responsible criteria. The, this is sort of disenfranchising voters just at a time when Asheville could be a shining city on the hill instead of doing the bidding of mega corporations like Raytheon. And we still need you to make amends for that surprise attack, even if you weren't completely responsible for it. This is changing the character of our area. There is a great opportunity, but only if you work with citizens to be a leader, to have social impact criteria on employment. And I've been talking with unions about the disenfranchisements of the unions and all the loss of jobs and the horrible impacts in Connecticut. And we do not need you to lay waste just for political and short-term financial gain. Please make an about-face.
Caller, you are live.
Well, hello in there. This is Don Yelton, and I am sitting out in front as usual, and I'm just waiting to double the crowd and get somebody else to join me, because, you know, I really miss the pleasure of getting to see you all face-to-face, and I'm sure you do me. But I want to, I want to do a little different thing, because as I was listening to the other callers, and good I wasn't the first one, I think it would behoove this Board at Buncombe County to look at the history of why we have the Blue Ridge Parkway. The Blue Ridge Parkway came about as a result of the fact that we had the fire in San Francisco, the Great Chicago Fire, and we ran out of wood. And guess where there was timber? There was timber in western North Carolina. Guess what cutting the trees down brought to western North Carolina? Brought the railroad. And the railroad then helped the area grow. And because the timber companies had bought the timber, cut the timber off, they let it be sold for nearly nothing. And along comes Franklin Delano Roosevelt, and he created make-do work at a quarter a day. And the people that lived here, us old hillbillies that have had so much privilege because of that, we were willing to take a quarter a day and think it was good pay. And then we went to build the Parkway. And I can remember, but you could drive the Parkway, and you could see for miles and miles and miles. Guess what? All those trees will come back. And the people that talk about the trees and try to save them don't have a piece of property and watch it grow up as the trees totally, totally just smother everything. The vegetation gets poor, the trees fall down, knocks other trees down. And this is a fact. And what I just told you all is true, but we don't know it, because we don't know our history. And that would be through everybody, because like I said, this area was very depleted, depressed, and if it hadn't have been for the timber and a bag for that people, Asheville wouldn't even exist. So please, please, think about what I said, that while we're looking for equity, and we're looking for justice, and we're looking for equality everywhere in all of our money and everything.
Thirty seconds.
That we be equal and give the accurate, proper history. And you should let us in there live to see you, because I'd like to know how many staffs there. Goodbye. See you next Commissioners meeting. We'll be out front.
That concludes our public comment.
All right, thank you very much to all the folks who took time to call in and share their comments this evening. All right, next up, we have several presentations. The first is going to be from Don Warren, our Finance Director. He's going to be talking to us about the FY year-end 2020 audit.
Good evening, Commissioners. Glad to be here. Very happy this item is on the agenda, because we are done with the audit. Just to give you my perspective on it, the audit went very well. We didn't have any issues working with Clifton Larson Allen, even though we were completely, they were completely remote. It actually worked out pretty well, thanks to Workday and all the workflows we have, which was a great thing. Chris is here. He's going to give you all the nitty-gritty details on how wonderful we are, and if you have any questions, I'll be here, Terry's here, or you can ask Chris. So I'll turn it over Chris now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everyone in person. I was telling Don, we've been doing a lot of these via Zoom, and it's nice getting out and doing these in person again, and having some facial expressions besides just a blank stare on the screen, as I have been for the last 12 months. So, good to see everyone in person. So as Don said, we're here to talk about the 2020, June 30, 2020, audit results and the procedures that we performed. A little bit of background about CLA, you know, for a couple of the new faces on the Board. We are the eighth-largest public accounting firm in the country. We focus on states and local governments, other industries as well. But your audit team here at the county, we're folks that do state and local government audits and consulting year-round. We live, we breathe it. And what that does is, is we think it gives a little bit more to you all as the county than just an audit opinion. You know, every audit opinion can look very similar at the end of the day, the piece of paper that it's printed on. It's the way we work, it's the things that we bring to the table, to the management team, the suggestions, the help, the improvements that we really strive to, you know, really, really pride ourselves on as we're completing our audit. So, you know, my point of the presentation today is not just to say, here's the numbers, here's the results. It's really to talk you all through what we did, how we kind of come up with our approach, and, you know, it all builds into our knowledge of state and local governments for how we complete our audits, and, you know, hopefully gives you all quality assurance that we know, you know, the ins and the outs, and you're getting a good product at the end of the day. So the audit services that we performed, we audited the financial statements, June 30, 2020, and the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We also audit the federal and state grant compliance, which is known as the single audit. So the large grants that the county is receiving, we have to test a sample of transactions and make sure expenditures are in compliance with the programs, as well as reported appropriately for 2020. So the reports that we have delivered here, the first is the Independent Auditor's Report, which is the opinion on the financial statements. The second is the Report on Internal Controls, which is where we would report any sort of findings within the financial statements. The third, the long title here on the slide, but it's our Single Audit Report. It is our Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance. And then the fourth is the Governance Communication, which is a letter that we issue at the conclusion of the audit, really summarizing the results of our procedures. So if anything had have come up, any significant issues or anything along those lines, they would be included in that Governance Communication. We had no such items. But the next slide, I'll talk through some of the things that are in that letter that we are required to communicate. So the first on here, our opinion on the financial statements, it was unmodified, which means it is a clean audit opinion, the highest level of opinion you all can receive. There was an emphasis of a matter paragraph in the opinion, which, which means we had to bring something to attention that we felt was significant. And what this represents, it was a change in accounting estimate, excuse me, changing an accounting estimate that management of the county had implemented during this year, changing evaluation date. Completely okay, in accordance with the accounting rules. It was really just for helping get more information timely from some of the actuaries of the county. We just have to call it out, because it did result in prior balances being restated because of the change, but it didn't impact our opinion in any way. Our opinion on compliance also was unmodified, which means we didn't have any findings as it related to the federal and the single, federal and state single audit. Our scope and timing of the audit proceeded as planned. The significant accounting policies are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We had no issues with the application or the consistency with them. And then there are significant estimates in the financial statements that I highlight here on the slide. There's, we've audited those estimates, we've audited the valuations and the assumptions. We just have to report them to you all and make you all aware that those are estimates, and they are subject to judgment and estimate, but we didn't note any issues in completing our audit. We had no material audit adjustments, which means the numbers that you all received from management for June 30, 2020 were unchanged from the numbers that are in the CAFER that you all have in front of you. Uncorrected misstatements, these are adjustments that weren't material at the end of the day, but we did note them as we were completing our audits. We do have to report them. They're over a certain threshold, you know, we consider to be not quite trivial, but they're not material. And the first is, there was a litigation settlement that we, you know, everyone was made aware of right before we were issuing the financial statements. Instead of reopening the books and putting the accrual into the CAFER, the adjustment was passed upon by management, and it'll be recorded in '21. And then the other item was just some, some small items from the prior year, the '19 audit, that affected 2020 that we have to report until they go away. But again, no findings or anything related to those. They're just small things we have to report. No difficulties were encountered in performing the audit, no disagreements with management. And, you know, just to highlight here, management was very cooperative, helpful, really a pleasure to work with, and I'll talk about 2020 here in a slide coming up. But, you know, I will say, this year's audit was, was difficult. Don mentioned we were remote. The pandemic made things challenging, both from our standpoint at CLA, but also from the county's standpoint. Things were different. You know, you all are administering grant programs, you know, coronavirus relief funds are coming in, there's future legislation coming down the line as far as additional programs. And this isn't just here at Buncombe County, this is with all of our clients. Folks are doing a lot more with less, and so it's made 2020 a difficult year for, for finance and for the auditors. So the fact that the audit was completed by the timeline, management worked very hard to get everything done by the state's deadline is a testament to the effort that they put in and the team that they have here. So I kind of talk about this a little bit in this slide, but, you know, in 2020, the state did extend the deadline to January 31, 2021, and that, that extension was, of course, due to the pandemic that was ongoing, but also because there were federal programs that have what's called a compliance supplement that has to be issued before auditors can complete the single audit. And what that basically is, is it's a, it's an audit guide. It's basically the federal government telling us how to complete our audit of that program. That, for the coronavirus relief funds, did not get issued until right before the Christmas holiday. And so it took everybody a lot of time to get their hands around that, get our templates built, get our approach built for all of our clients that got the coronavirus relief funds, and then hit the ground running in January to get these things done. So that affected the timeline from a financial statement standpoint. You know, things would have been on time if not for, you know, everything going on with the pandemic and that compliance supplement. The other thing on here, the GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, did delay implementation of all of their standards by one year. So just something that the county is going to have to deal with going forward as well is that, you know, GASB 84 is listed here, that was one that was going to have to be implemented this year, the county will have to implement it next year, and every other GASB coming down the pipe over the next couple of years is going to be on a one-year delay. From an audit approach summary, you know, for those of you that saw this presentation in years past, our audit approaches stayed pretty consistent in some of our risk areas that we look at, but there's two big differences here that I do want to really highlight. The first is the internal control environment. You know, every year when we complete the audit, we, we look at internal controls from top to bottom, we ask the same questions that we ask every year to make sure that internal controls are still functioning as designed, and that they're still effective. You know, we don't rely on prior years or, you know, roll-forward documentation. What changed this year when the pandemic hit, and what we found is, controls maybe were similar in nature, but they looked different. Maybe folks were approving things via email, maybe people were working remotely, whatever it may have looked like. So we had to get our hands around the control environment as it was for that last quarter of the year or so, with, with everyone, you know, potentially having a different work environment. So we focused on that, and, you know, with, with Workday and the electronic nature of that system, it really allowed the county to be in a good spot for when the pandemic hit and folks were working remotely or had to distance or whatever it may be. You all were able to still continue with business as usual for a lot of those processes and procedures. And the other thing on here, just from, from a risk standpoint, I mentioned it with the compliance supplement, the coronavirus relief fund was a major program this year for you all, you know, both from an accounting, financial standpoint, as well as from a compliance standpoint. It was high-risk, and we had to spend a lot of time digging into that, which we did, and, you know, we had no findings or anything along those lines. So the documentation around that program was very strong as we got into, and we could tell that the county had done their due diligence on the expenditures that, that we were looking at through June 30. And then, of course, the last bullet here, you know, as with prior years, any prior year findings that, that existed, we do have to do follow-up on those. So that becomes one of the first things we do, is say, okay, where are we on the prior year findings? If they've been addressed, we make sure we understand why. If they haven't been, we're going into that pathway and say, is it a repeated comment or something that we need to be dealing with? So, on, you know, thinking of findings, from a financial statement standpoint, there were none reported. There were some, some best practices and suggestions, some verbal comments that we made over the course of the audit, best practices, things like that, you know, it comes back to what I said at the opening. We really try to be more than just, here's a financial statement opinion, you know, and get out of here. We try to bring value, we try to show some room, areas for improvement and best practices. So we did have some of those that we worked with, Don and Terry and their team, as far as just, you know, things to think about going forward, but nothing that rose to a level of needing to be reported in writing. From a single audit standpoint, these are our federal and major programs that, or, I'm sorry, federal and state major programs that were audited. All of these are pretty common programs, except for coronavirus relief fund. And as I've, you know, kind of hit that one multiple times, that was a big area, and, you know, we spent a lot of time on that. So the results of the single audit, you know, there were no findings as it related to non-compliance in the federal programs, and there was one finding as it related to non-compliance in a state program, the lottery proceeds for public school buildings. And what this related to is just a timing of reports that were filed with the state. Typically with these grant programs, there's a certain deadline of status reports or close-out reports or something along those lines, and there's a certain deadline, 30 days after project closed, 60 days after project closed, they have to be filed. These were just instances of that, that deadline not being hit, they were still submitted. And when you look at our findings, it says it's a significant deficiency, and when you think of single audit findings, there's, there's two levels. There's material weakness, and then there's significant deficiency. Material weakness is as it sounds. It's a material issue that, that's a cause for concern. Significant deficiency is any other finding that we have. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean it's material to the grant, but it is a compliance issue, and we have to report it. So I don't want to diminish it by any means, but when you look at them, you know, at the rating of where they fall, a significant deficiency is rating of where they fall, a significant deficiency is generally minor in nature from a compliance standpoint. And before I, I hit on this year-to-year summary here, with all findings, management puts together a corrective action plan for how they're going to address findings. And so, that's the same thing that's been done this year and that will be the first thing that we look at next year as far as starting the audit and saying, okay, have these findings been corrected? So, you know, I, I, I had this slide in here last year and I added to it this year to talk about the 2020 results, because I do think this is a, you know, this is a testament to, you know, the, the progress that the county's made over the last few years. You know, when we came in, in 2018, for those of you that recall, there were a lot of findings and a lot of issues that were being worked through. And, you know, you count that, that's 16, 19 in 2018, that's three in 2019 and one in 2020. So, that's a pretty good, pretty good progress rate for the county year-to-year-to-year from a findings standpoint. So, you know, again, as I talk about, you know, the, the helpfulness and, and everything that the county's management has done in helping us complete the audit, this from your all's standpoint as the, as the board, is another testament to the work that they've been doing to be able to say there is tangible progress in cleaning up a lot of those, those findings and items that we had noted over time. So, I know Don and Terry and his team will agree, the hope is to get that down to zero next year. So, just some highlights, you know, without reading the financial statements to you, you know, I always like to point you to the management's discussion and analysis that's on pages six through 16. You know, if there's anything in the financial statements themselves that you're going to read, I would recommend that. That gives the context from management as far as what happened during the year, you know, why it happened, what were the trends, besides just the numbers in the financial statements that are there. I, I have some highlights here for the general fund. You know, I'll point you to the statements for the general fund on page 22 and 24. But, you know, $97.8 million of fund balance is, you know, that's, that's equity. That's the difference between your assets and liabilities and the general fund. And we have a breakdown here of what the categories are as far as restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. You know, from your all's standpoint, that unassigned fund balance is, those are your funds available for spending that have no earmark or, or no sort of allocation to them. So, so that's something to really be looking at when you think of fund balance policy going forward and, you know, what, what the direction of the board and the county is as far as, you know, using those funds and where you really foresee those being used. The state has a minimum fund balance policy in place that's already included in the other categories. So, that unassigned truly is, you know, the fund balance that you all have to make decisions on future spending. And so, that was an increase in fund balance of 2.5 million for the year. And I have some highlights from the budgetary standpoint here as well. You know, revenues were $2 million above budget and expenses were $19.1 million less than budgeted, which, you know, you all were, were budgeting for a $15.5 million essentially deficit, a use of prior year fund balance at the start of the year that you didn't have to get into. You know, what we've seen around the country is that when the pandemic happened, a lot of spending was cut. And so, that's increased a lot of the, the fund balance in 2020. So, you all are not, you know, alone in kind of seeing that and that was kind of, you know, par for the course for, for local governments this past year. I do want to just show you a little bit of, of just some benchmarking as far as where you all compare to some of your peer counties around the state. And, and this chart here, it talks about general fund revenue and general fund expenditures. You know, you can see there's a couple outliers here in the Mecklenburg and the Wake counties that, you know, there's, there's some much bigger numbers, especially Wake having a, you look at them, they have a pretty large surplus of revenues over expenditures. You know, where you would all would be concerned is if the, the green, the green bar was higher than the blue bar and you all were expending more than, than you were bringing in from a revenue standpoint. But, you know, you are pretty much in line with everybody else from a, you know, how you're managing your revenues and how you're managing your expenditures. And this last chart here, you know, this is, this talks about general fund, fund balance. And the blue is fund balance, total fund balance as a percentage of your operating expenditures in the general fund. And, and that's a key metric because, you know, you, you want to make sure your fund balance is enough to sustain the county should something horrible happen. Tax revenues dry up, some sort of grant source goes away, whatever it may be, how do we maintain in the event of that catastrophic emergency? So, having, having a solid level of fund balance to sustain that is very good. So, 30%, you know, that's about four months of operating expenditures when you think about it that way. That's above the state's minimum policy, that's above GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association's minimum expectation as well. There's no right or wrong number on what to have there. Some governments will prefer that be very high, six months, eight months, nine months, whatever it may be. I, I pointed out, just so you all can kind of see where your peer counties are. And then the orange bar here is the unassigned fund balance. So, that amount of your fund balance that's not earmarked and not encumbered elsewhere. And, you know, again, you all are in line with others as a percentage of expenditures because that truly is the rainy day fund, right? What your unassigned fund balance is. But what I wanted to point out is, you, you look at your, your gap between total and unassigned and you all have a very narrow margin there, meaning that the majority of your fund balance is unassigned at the end of the day. So, when you start thinking about spending going forward, and again, I say this knowing there's no right or wrong answer as far as how you all want to do this, but some things to start thinking about is your fund balance increases and your unassigned fund balance increases. We started suggesting to clients that they start coming up with programs or, or commitments or something to put that unassigned fund balance to use, whether it's something simple like disaster mitigation or emergency reserve or something along those lines and put it in that bucket where that's what it's for. And, and so, that way, either the, the citizens, the taxpayers, management of the county can look at it and say, here is what we know this is being used for. And so, when you look at some of the comparable counties on here and you look at Gaston and you look at Wake, and they have pretty much 0% of their unassigned, you look at their financial statements, they have just taken all of their unassigned and put it into a bucket. They call it, or, you know, they call out a use for it so that there is no unassigned. Everything has a purpose. So, there's no right or wrong, there's, there's middle ground, you know, obviously the 0% is an extreme. But, as you get through the pandemic and you start seeing additional funds coming from various sources and, you know, the uncertainty that still exists around where things go over the next year, two years, just some things to think about and kind of food for thought as far as, you know, what to do with that fund balance and where you go forward with it.
Could I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
That's very interesting, helpful content. Could you just go back a tiny bit and kind of, I know you're saying there's no right or wrong answer, but maybe give us a sentence or two explainer on sort of the, the working theory behind my, why we might want to assign more fund balance and, and why some people would say that is a good idea?
It, it's, it's really to make sure that you've got it put to something, to a, to a, to a use and to a category that is useful for you all. And it, it's really, transparency is the other side of it, is to say, what is our intention of, of this? Because what, what the reporting wants to avoid is just saying, this is a slush fund, this is a rainy day fund. And technically under the, the accounting, you couldn't actually do that. You couldn't just say, this is just for, you know, rainy day. That's, that's explicitly not allowed. So, it's really to sit there and say, okay, what's our, what's our plan going forward, you know, outside of the budget? You know, how do, where, where are we going and how are we intending to use these funds?
And the counterargument would be, well, the pandemic happens and what you need is maximum flexibility. And so, if you have restricted fund balance, it becomes harder to maneuver through something like this.
Correct. And if you all did move forward with, let's just say you committed it to, let's, let's say disaster relief, it would also then take an action by you all to peel that away should you want to reduce it or change the purpose or anything along those lines.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, just, just real quick to talk about 2021 and beyond, you know, given that we're, you know, eight months past year in 2020, we're already in 2021, but there's a lot of moving pieces for local governments at this point. You know, as I talked about, GASB's delayed their standards by a year. So, there is a big change in accounting coming up that will be effective for fiscal year 2022. The management is working on it. There, there's a lot of logistics as far as capturing contracts to determine what the overall obligation as it relates to leases are and put that on the balance sheet. So, that will be a change eventually, but the accounting is easy. It's, it's the logistics of capturing everything that, that becomes a challenge on top of everything else that's going on. It, it is difficult. So, management's working on it now and even though it's a year and a half away, it's going to take that year and a half to get it out there. The other thing to, to, to just think about, CARES Act funding and any other funding that's coming down the line. So, since June 30, 2020, we've seen the emergency rental assistance programs come out, we've seen the extension of the coronavirus relief funds, there's going to be additional programs coming out from the federal government once the legislation gets passed, you know, within the next month or so. There is going to be additional burden on the county and financial management. And, you know, but that, that's the trade-off with any sort of funding is there's strings attached towards compliance and the documentation and keeping all of that clear. So, you know, what I just want to stress, and, you know, we talk about there being no findings in what we looked at in the coronavirus relief fund, that level of diligence has to be stressed with all of these programs. You know, with, with, with the coronavirus relief funds, there were no real set rules when it came out. It was just, here's a bunch of money, please spend it on a general purpose. And they figured out the rules as they went. We might see some of that same thing over these programs that come out over the next few months. So, what the county has to do is focus on documentation, focus on having the justification for any expense as it relates to pandemic costs or anything along those lines, just have that out there. It's a lot easier to say, here were the rules on March 2nd and here's what we did to follow them, even though maybe on September 30th, they're not the same anymore. So, just, you know, just to continue that mindset throughout this is going to be very important. And then, of course, the continued pandemic impact, you know, as you talk through your budgeting process for 2022, you know, I'm cautioning my clients, just, just remember back in 2007 and 2008, when the mortgage crisis hit, there was a, a delay, there was a lag for when local governments felt some of the economic impact. And so, as you're thinking through budgeting, just, just keep that in the back of your mind. No one knows, you know, different economists will tell you something different and I am not an economist, but I am just telling you from a cautionary standpoint, we've seen it and, you know, just think through that as, you know, you all progress through the next few months here. But with that said, you know, if, if, if there's anything else we can do to help, you know, a link to our events page, we have lots of articles and webinars as far as local government, tax impact, PPP, anything that's happening right now in the world, the new legislation, we have thought leadership out on it, we have webinars, it's free to sign up. So, you know, if there's anything that may interest you, please feel free. I'd love to see it one of our events virtually in the future here. So, with that said, my, my contact info's here, but I'll, I'll pause for questions, comments, and anything else before I wrap it up.
All right. Thank you so much, Chris. Commissioners, are there any other questions at this time? And Commissioner Whitesides or Presley, if there's anything you'd like to just add about the audit process as are our two reps on the audit committee this year?
No, I would just like to thank Chris for a good report. You kept me awake for two hours today, this morning and this is a good report. We appreciate it. And I hope everybody realizes the reason we were able to get a clean opinion from Chris, April, Don, Terry, and Jennifer, along with all of our financial staff, our people made this possible and especially in the times we're in. They had a lot of barriers that could have really made it more difficult in the process scenes. And if they would tell you, it was not as smooth getting to this point as we think it was, but they made it look good there. But I'd like to thank all of you and look forward to working with you in the future, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if paid attention, they're back four or five pages before in 18 with 20-something against and down to one, and the one is from the year before that had to come in. So, our staff, y'all done a great job and, you know, what we've had to do virtual has been hard, but, you know, my hat's off to all of you and thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you for our audit committee reps. Chris, thank you for you and your team being part of this and all the folks on the county finance team. Thank you for all your hard work on this too and a great report tonight and thanks and we look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Great. All right. Thank you all very much.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Historic Resources Commission and Emily Kite, who's the chair of the commission's here to give us the update.
Okay. There we go. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to come present. I am Emily Kite and I chair the Historic Resources Commission. Historic Resources is a joint commission with the city and county. We have 12 members on our commission, six are appointed by the city and six are appointed by you folks. We currently have one vacancy in the county, which we're working to fill at the moment. Historic Resources Commission serves to protect and to preserve our historic resources really throughout the county. A primary role that we play is to review projects for modifications and changes to locally designated historic landmarks and also districts that we have throughout Buncombe County. But in addition to that, we do also designate new landmarks and new districts and serve as an educational resource really throughout the county in addition to the, the projects that we hear on a monthly basis. Some of them, the accomplishments I want to talk about today really have less to do with the projects that we review monthly, but some of the other things that we have accomplished in winter of 2020, the Louis Muller Griffith House was designated as a local historic landmark that is located in the Grove Park neighborhood. On fall of 2019, the Thomas Wolfe Cabin Master Plan was completed. That property is of course in Azalea Park over by the soccer fields. On winter 2018, we initiated the African-American Heritage Resource Survey. That's to document historically African-American properties and, and history throughout the county. And it's back in spring night of 2015, we completed and adopted the Historic Preservation Master Plan for Asheville and Buncombe County. Part of what we're doing here today is to try to keep both the county and city folks kind of up to speed on what current initiatives are for the HRC and accomplishments. Some of the things that we're looking ahead to and have recently completed, one of the challenges that we're facing is continuing the ongoing sort of county-wide architectural update and survey. One of the, the ways this becomes important, I think recently the community had a lot of, of opinions about the Anka Clock Tower. That's one of those properties that would be sort of surveyed as part of a broader county architectural survey. We've also been successful in documenting some of the more underrepresented communities within the city of Asheville as part of the African-American Heritage Survey. So, that's been a success lately that we've, that we've been able to accomplish. There've been some 160D legislative updates that have impacted historic resources and preservation and also some updates to the UDO that have impacted us in recent, in the last probably 12 months or so as well. Financially, dating back to 2010, the city has fought, sought funding from the county to support HRC and that has been through the county's strategic partnership program. I think in the last year that the, that availability of that funding is no longer available to HRC and it is available earmarked only for nonprofit agencies. In December of 2020, the county's planning and development department allocated $4,174 to support the HRC program. The total programmatic budget for fiscal year 2021 for HRC is $164,276. Some things that are on the horizon for us is to work with the Burton Street neighborhood in West Asheville to complete a pattern book of those properties that are along Burton Street, to continue to work towards the completion of architectural survey of all African-American historic resources throughout the county, not just those with, that are within the city limits, and to continue to seek funding to update the county-wide architectural survey and to present the Historic Preservation Master Plan that we've developed for Asheville, for Asheville and Buncombe County to this body for approval and adoption. And I think that might be, that's the last slide. Does anybody have any questions? A little quick little update for you.
I, I do. I see where you're doing a lot, you know, I see where you're doing a lot, you know, to support the African American community. But do you have any representative on your board from the African American community?
We have. That person is the vacancy that we've just are in the process of filling. And so we have historically had folks from the African American community represented on our board.
But if we fill the vacancy you brought forward, we will not have, right?
We haven't. I don't think that, I don't think that the application process has been completed for that vacancy at this point.
Oh, good.
That's correct. I think one of the challenging things for HRC is, you know, we are often looking for folks that have particular skill set and a particular expertise around historic properties. And so sometimes are the folks that are applying, it, you know, impacts the selections that we can make. But in this particular case, we've not finished that selection process at this time.
When is the process over?
That part is a question that I don't know that I have the answer for.
We're actually going to talk about that on boards and commissions tonight.
Because I think I can help.
Okay. We'll talk, we're going to talk about it later tonight.
Okay.
What the process is going to be. When is the Historic Preservation Master Plan going to be presented?
I don't know that we've got that on the agenda. I think that's been something that's been completed for a couple of years now, and we just need to sort of get back on the schedule and get that in front of y'all for a review.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. Any other questions at this time? All right. Emily, thank you so much for coming and giving us some updates on the work of the Historic Resources Commission, and we look forward to talking with you further.
Yep. Thanks for your time.
Yep. Bye-bye. All right. Next up, we're going to get a presentation from the Health and Human Services Board, and Greg Naren, the chair, is going to help us out with this item.
Good evening, commissioners and members of the viewing public. I'm Stoney Blevins, and as your HHS director, it is honestly my privilege to serve alongside the Health and Human Services Board. We have a 19-member board, and I must say, they are highly engaged, highly supportive of the purpose of HHS, and as you well know, are champions in the area of equity and service delivery. So tonight, it's my privilege to introduce you to Dr. Greg Naren, who is the current chair of the HHS Board.
All right. Thank you, Stoney.
Thank you, commissioners, Chairman Newman, fellow HHS board member, Commissioner Edwards, for this opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the Health and Human Service Board. It's my pleasure to serve as a chairman, but it's also my challenge to present an oversight and overview of a board that I'm relatively new to. I'm finishing out my second year there. And one thing about being new to a board, you come onto a board and you're learning about an agency, and you don't recognize how many other people are new as well. And it's for that reason that I am the chairman this year. And we have a 19-member board, many of which are in their first term, some are beginning to serve their second term, and they are a highly engaged group of citizens in our county, and they have embraced their responsibilities and obligations in a way that's very dynamic. And I'm very happy to be serving on the board with them. I'll go back to make sure. There we go. The board is mandated by law to exist, to provide, as a consolidated human service board, that we have the powers and the duties conferred by law upon the Board of Health, a social service board, and a mental health, developmental disability, and substance abuse board if applicable. So the key issue here is that we are a consolidated board. We have both social services as well as public health. About 26 consolidated boards exist in North Carolina. Many, not all counties have such a consolidated board. You will notice here that the statute also mentions mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse board. We do not have those, and while it's not germane to our conversation here tonight, as a psychiatrist on the HSS board, I will point out that, you know, the mentally ill and the development of disabled people in our community no longer have the services and provisions that it once did through our community mental health centers and things such as that, which impact our community and our citizens today. So looking at the responsibility of the board, we assign these tasks, all beginning with the letter A. We are to approve, assure, advise, advocate, and be ambassadors, and ensure accreditation. In our approval process, we are responsible to help set these and recommend to you the fees that are charged through our public health and social work programs. We also recommend the creation of human service programs that are there to protect and provide health for the community. We can establish local rules to protect health, and we also must conduct and recommend audits and programmatic reviews for all HHS programs. So what is a local public rule? A local law that is deemed necessary to protect and promote the health, public health, that is adopted by the local Board of Health. It applies to the jurisdiction covered by the local HSS board, and it has the force of law, and there may be legal means to enforce the rule against those who do not comply. That is not our only path to be influential when it comes to rules. We can also go by the way of ordinance, which more recently, you recall that you, as a county commissioner, has approved our tobacco ordinance and how tobacco can or cannot be used within the county on local county property. By assuring compliance, we oversee the monitoring and understand the areas of success and struggle for the agency. We maintain awareness about the pressures and demands that are placed upon the Health and Human Agency. We oversee the budget. We ask questions, provide feedback during the budget planning process, and we endorse and recommend a budget prior to commissioner approval. This is done on a yearly basis, and we also would provide oversight and adjudicate disputes about local health rules or the imposition of penalties for the violation of public health laws. Because we are a new board and we oversee a very broad area of our community's public health and social services, we have decided to operate as a board under a programmatic structure. This will allow us to, as members, become more intimately involved in the various areas of the agency. The plan is that each board member will rotate through the various program committees throughout their tenure so that they can understand the scope and the breadth of the agency and its work. And how it's devised is that every program committee is, well, the programs themselves are set to reflect how the agency itself is now structuring itself. And those three areas are community health, community safety and support, and community opportunities. Every program committee has a director from the agency to participate in the program committee, the public health for the community health, social work director for safety and support, and economic service director for the community opportunities. Every program committee consists of five to seven board members, and we will at times include people within the community who have specific interests or essential expertise in these areas as we pursue programs. The other thing that's interesting about this committee structure is that this is relatively new. We started this in January, and it was a unanimous decision on behalf of the 19 members to not decrease the number of times we met as a general board. So we do meet on a monthly basis, but that we also meet prior to the general board meeting as a program committee. So we're getting to know the various aspects of the agency. We're coming together, and then that will begin to set the agenda for the general board meetings as well. And that, I think, reflects the degree of interest and commitment of all the board members that serve on the HSS board. The other role we play is that of advocacy. Advocacy can occur at any level, federal, state, or local. It can be done through expertise, knowledge, and relationships, and on the local level, it could be through recommending the creation of local human service programs or providing public relations for existing programs and supporting equity and service delivery. You know, a small story associated with advocacy was, less than a year ago, or maybe it was about a year ago, it's been a crazy year, an exiting nurse on our board, Sharon West, parted, and she challenged the board by saying, you know, I really do believe that you need to look at racial inequality as a public health issue. And it resonated with everyone on the board. And that was before the pandemic, and that was before our increased awareness around social injustice and things like that. And Frank Castel Blanco, the former chairman of the HSS board, had the foresight to which to write a proclamation, you know, stating that we, as a board, recognize that racial inequality is a public health crisis. And at the time that we wrote that proclamation, he presented it to you, I think we were one of about 20 cities in the United States who were there at that point to make a proclamation right when we actually needed it the most. So I think it's, you know, a powerful example of where advocacy, you know, can be well-applied and we can be very effective. The essential thing about accreditation is if you're not accredited, you don't get paid. So all local health departments are required to be accredited to receive both state and federal public health funding, which, as you know, is an essential aspect of the budget and getting programs implemented and approved. Finally, as ambassadors, this is the list of the people who are currently serving on the board. You will notice that there are certain statutory positions that are mandated and therefore must be filled, and then there are statutory positions such as public consumer advocate that, you know, people from all walks of life and all various professions can participate in. Currently, we only have one vacated statutory position, and that is of the notematers. However, we have an application in hands that we will be pursuing that, and hopefully we'll be presenting that candidate if it's applicable to you as board of commissioners. So that pretty much summarizes and gives an overview of our HSS board. Thank you for this opportunity to review that with you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Thank you, Greg. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I've got a quick one. Dr. Naren, thank you for your time and for your service on this important board for our community. Looking at your very last slide of the ambassadors of the statutory positions of various disciplines, I can't imagine it's easy to find folks to fill those positions on a rotating basis. But my question is, in your experience, are there other professions you feel like should be included? Are there times where you feel like you wish you had the experience and knowledge from a different discipline at your disposal on this board?
I'm going to try to go back to that slide next, if you can help me. Thank you. As you look at the statutory positions, there is heavily laden in the public health, of course, and public health is such a major component of it. I think, you know, in this learning about the scope of the agency, you know, the agency provides and gives permits for soil testing, which affects construction, which, you know, is not something that you oftentimes think about when you are looking at public health and social services. There is a position there for an engineer. I, you know, perhaps there might be other positions that would be very applicable would come into, such as in the area of engineering and construction, when you're looking at housing, city planning, things like that. That would, I think, also be applicable to everything that the board actually does.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. We're going to be talking about some of the reappointments on the board this evening as well. So thank you for your service there and all the other folks that you work with and our team there. It's obviously one of the most significant parts of the overall county operation, so we really appreciate all the time and dedication that you put in and all the other folks who serve as volunteers on this board.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a public hearing, and this is going to be on consideration of the Economic Development Agreement with Borg Warner, and Tim Love is going to present this item.
Good evening.
This evening, we have a public hearing related to the Borg Warner Economic Development Agreement. To get us through today, I've got a few slides. Also, just wanted to take a moment to introduce some of the folks in the audience on the team. In particular, from Borg Warner, we have the plant manager for the Arden Plant. That's Brian Lizing. Additionally, in the audience, we have with our EDC Clark Duncan and April Brown, who you're familiar with. In terms of today's presentation, though, let's get to the slides. So background and request. So the background here, around July 28th of 2020, Borg Warner Turbo Systems announced that it had chosen Buncombe County for its expansion project. For those that are unaware, Borg Warner specializes in propulsion systems for combustion, hybrid, and electric vehicles that improve fuel efficiency. For those that are unaware, Borg Warner has had a presence here in Buncombe County since 1975, and the plant today, the Arden Plant, employs about 500 people, which manufacture vehicle turbos as well as emission systems. A key part of their presence here in Arden that we don't talk about a lot, though, is there's a Technology Product Development Center, and I won't steal Brian's thunder, but we'll talk a little bit about that today. The request today before the board is approval for economic development incentives as well as approval of an economic development agreement. You can achieve both of those by approving the resolution. That's also included in your packet. As we talk about Borg Warner, I just want to orient the public as well as the commission to where we are. So this is a map. The red dot indicates where Borg Warner is located. So you can see that it's between 191 Brevard Road and Long Shoals Road. So, you can see that it's between 191 Brevard Road and Long Shoals Road. The project for Borg Warner, the scope of it, Borg Warner will continue investing in this existing plant that's been here since 1975. They'll do so by retaining 500 jobs and adding an additional 100 jobs from other U.S. locations to this plant. While they're doing that, they're going to invest about $62.25 million into this plant for real and business personal property as they continue to grow here with us and continue to emphasize research and development here in Buncombe County. The average wage for these jobs is significant. The hourly wage is right under $25 an hour and right over $51,000 annually, not to mention health benefits and other types of insurance. The tagline, pretty similar to what you've seen from me in the past, you know, this aligns to the Buncombe 2025 Strategic Plan, specifically around the areas of growing employment in this region, but probably more importantly, helping this region catch up to the median average wages that we see across the state, but that have lagged behind here in Buncombe County for years. At this point, I want to take just a brief minute to, once again, introduce you to Brian Lizing. I'll ask him to come to the podium. Brian, as I said, is the facility manager for Borg Warner. He's going to tell us a little bit about the product, or, excuse me, the project, as well as the product that they produce and what the timeline is and all of that good stuff. When he's done, he'll turn it over to me, and we'll begin to move forward with the rest of the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate you taking your time tonight, and I'm glad to be here to talk to you about the expansion that we plan to make here in Buncombe County. So, first, I'll start just with a general overview of Borg Warner. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the company. It is a U.S.-based company, we're actually approaching 120 years as a company here in the United States. A little bit older if you go back to our original roots of Moore Systems, back to 1875, this company started here in the U.S. I'll start with our vision. Borg Warner's vision is a clean, energy-efficient world. That's been our vision probably now for the last seven or eight years, and it's really focused on understanding the transition from internal combustion engine technology, which is historically what Borg Warner's been about, moving more into the electrification world. So, you'll see, if you look at our public statements, we've been making a very intentional shift in the last, I'd say, 10 years towards electrification with hybrid and full electric vehicles. Our mission is in the same line with that, as a propulsion system leader for combustion, hybrid, and electric vehicles. So, again, if you looked at Borg Warner, historically, we were known for the combustion engine-type technology. And a big move, you may have seen the Delphi announcement that we just finished that merger a couple of months ago, late last year, a big emphasis on moving towards electrification. You'll see, you'll hear a little bit about that in the Asheville facility as well, and how we support that vision. Looking at our beliefs, this is also an update to Borg Warner's beliefs. There's a couple of things I'd really point out that's been a very intentional shift for us here in the last few years, or reemphasis. One is inclusion and respect for individuals. As Borg Warner definitely is a proud corporate citizen here in this country and globally, we understand the need to be very intentional about being inclusive in everything that we do. So, that's one of the beliefs that we've really been focusing on the last several years to make sure we get ahead of that. Integrity, excellence, collaboration, of course, those are always core values to this company, but then also responsibility around the environment. So, you'll see from a Borg Warner standpoint, if you look at some of our statements around sustainability here that just got released a few months ago, a big emphasis, again, historically around sustainability and what can we do next to make sure we're responsible corporate citizens. Globally, so this is relevant for our discussion tonight. So, if you look at Borg Warner, while we are a U.S.-based company historically, you can see we're well represented around the world. So, we have 33 locations here in the Americas, 31 in Europe, and 35 in Asia. Part of the reason this is important is we don't only compete as an Asheville plant, we don't only compete with non-Borg Warner competitors, we're competing globally with other Borg Warner plants. So, particularly if you look at Asia, the work that you're doing for us and with us helps keep us competitive so we can keep jobs here in the U.S., and not just compete with, again, external competitors, but our own internal Borg Warner. It is our intention, Borg Warner, where possible, we like to manufacture our product in the region that it's consumed. That's why you see us so well represented around the world. So, a little bit about the Arden Plant. So, this is a picture Timothy showed, the map where we're located. This campus, we do have operations. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we have both machining and assembly in the plant. We also have a local sales team that represents both us and some of our other Americas plants located here in this plant. And then importantly, we have a global and local engineering development and a tech center. So, again, if you look at the top left-hand corner of that picture, that's the Global Technical Center for Turbochargers based here in Arden. So, again, what we do as a manufacturing plant allows us to support technical development, not just for us here in this plant, but also for the globe around turbo technology. And I'll talk a little bit more about the project that brings in some additional technical work as well. From a quality, safety, and environmental, we are, if you're familiar with automotive, IETF and ISO certified, those are a requirement when you're in the space that we're in. But we are also currently actively pursuing a zero landfill certification for this plant. You may be familiar with our plant down in South Carolina in Seneca. They achieved that about five or six years ago. We're going after the same thing here. Again, as good corporate citizens, it's the right thing to do. And then we're pursuing ISO 45001. It's an environmental standard, it's a global standard that Borg Warner has embraced around the world, and this particular plant's going for that this year. From a customer base, we represent Ford, General Motors, John Deere, Mac Volvo, DTNA, Navistar, a really wide customer base, primarily in, obviously, in the automotive and commercial vehicle space, but also a lot of off-highway. And we're also entering now into some energy space. I can't really talk a lot about that, but we have some new energy technology that we're developing, co-developing with a new company that we're working together with using some of our turbo charge technology. And then finally, you heard Timothy say, turbochargers and fan drives. We've been here in the region since 1980 and 1975 respectively, and excited to talk about the expansion to hopefully keep us here much longer. So, this is a general layout of the plant, where it is today, except my animation's not working. It's going to be difficult for you to see without the animation, so let me just explain it to you. Basically, for the last two years, the Asheville plant has been working very intentionally around creating space so we could expand our operations in two realms. One is, we have a lot of space today that we use as off-site warehouse, which, if you can imagine, moving product between a warehouse offsite and our plant, one, it costs a lot of money, but also it's not great for the environment, because everywhere you have trucks moving to and from, double-touching material, it creates a lot of that environmental impact. So, part of this project is to bring that warehouse space that we're currently using off into the building, so we're not storing material offsite. At the same time, we're working on creating space. So, during the restructuring, if you're familiar with Borg Warner, last year, we announced globally quite an initiative around restructuring and footprint. This plant was preparing to be able to receive product in the event that the restructuring could impact us. So, we made space in this plant to get ready for what we're talking about tonight. So, the first step of this project is to bring in a North American thermal technical center to add to our turbo technical center. So, we had a technical center in Marshall, Michigan, and part of the restructuring that Borg Warner has done is to relocate that technical center here in Arden so that we could have a tech center for both turbochargers and the fan and fan drive technology, which is what we're bringing into the plant. From a footprint standpoint, what we're bringing in, we'll be moving in nine high-volume molding machines. So, you can see at the bottom of the screen, bottom right, that's a fan that goes into like a Ford Super Duty pickup truck, General Motors Super Duty trucks, and then DTNA, big commercial vehicles. That's the fan that cools the engine. That big plastic fan, we will mold in that plant on those nine molding presses, okay? Additionally, we'll bring in three fan drive assemblies. So, the product in the middle of that fan, that plastic fan, is a fan drive. It's a variable-controlled technology that has smart technology that allows you to turn it off, on and off, but not just on and off at variable speeds. And that's largely done for fuel economy. It helps with the fuel economy of the vehicle. So, we'll move in three lines, three high-volume assembly lines, as well as a lot of testing capabilities that come along with that. And then finally, the plan would be to bring in 15 machining centers, in addition to the machining centers we already have there in the Arden Plant. The goal would be to complete that by the end of this year, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight, and really appreciate you guys hearing from me tonight and considering this proposal. I think, Timothy, I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Brian. So, at this point, I'd like to transition into the Economic Development Agreement. This agreement is attached to the board packet, has been available for public view for the past week. The incentive structure for this agreement, the total incentive is about $460,000. That includes an annual incentive not to exceed $80,000 annually. So, the peak in any given year would be 80K. One thing I want to make clear, there's no incentive that's been calculated for the 600, what we're considering to be retained jobs in this community. So, we're not sort of paying for jobs that are already here. Additionally, the term of this agreement total is about nine years. There's a six-year creation period where Borg will begin to invest in our community, and then there's a three-year retention period after that, after they've hit all their targets, where they're required to still be in our community. Throughout that entire nine-year period, it's required that the 600 jobs that we've talked about are retained at the Arden Plant. As you've become accustomed with these agreements, the payout structure, again, it's a pay-for-performance or pro-rata formula. So, basically, you know, Borg's incentives are available to them if they meet their annual targets for both the capital investment as well as the jobs. So, if they fall underneath for either of those, the incentive will be paraded accordingly, and that formula is documented in the Economic Development Agreement. In terms of what that schedule looks like and how they'll move forward, Borg, you can see their incentive, or, excuse me, their capital investment in column three. So, you can see it's a pretty even path, you know, starting at around $13 million, in $8 million in out-years. You can see the jobs as we move over to the far-right column, maintaining 600 jobs at the plant throughout. And then the final column, the proposed incentive at $80,000, and then dropping down to $60,000 in the final year. Again, that's the proposed amount, depending on how Borg lives up to their performance commitments as documented in the agreement. In terms of the overall impact of this project here locally, there's the 600 jobs that we've mentioned, the $62 million in capital investment, which is substantial. Additionally, I'd like the board to know that the incentives, cash flow on an annual basis, that is, there's no year where we're paying out more than we're taking in in terms of tax revenue. Additionally, we're projecting to break even on this project in about four years, but that always depends on economic conditions and sort of the pace at which Borg builds out the project. There's a few other items that I neglected to add, but I wanted to continue to focus on the R&amp;D component of this plant, and I will invite Clark Duncan to join me just for a minute to talk about some of those aspects. You've heard Brian also talk about sort of the focus on, you know, sustainability, sort of electrification as the future. So, there's some impacts here that I think are substantial beyond just the economic development numbers. But with that said, Clark, if you'd like to join us and share some words.
Chairman Newman, members of the commission, it's great to be with you tonight. Thank you for this opportunity. Real quickly, I would love to introduce my colleague, April Brown, who directs our industry recruitment and expansion programs on our team and has led this project. Thank you, April, for that. I'm especially proud to be here tonight to talk on behalf of Borg Warner. The investment announced tonight by a 40-year local employer, I think, makes clear the importance of the work that we do together with the leadership of the commission in terms of industry, retention, and expansion. We champion the growth of local manufacturing on a daily basis because of its impact on our $22 billion local economy, its impact on our working families, and of course, on the neighborhoods in which they live. But beyond these outcomes, your support this evening secures, yet again, a corporate partner that we need in the private sector to help us advance critical goals of this commission and of this community, including the strategic priorities of Buncombe County. Internationally, the company is recognized as a leader in sustainability, and safety, and corporate responsibility, and in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And locally, they've put those values to the test by investing in our public schools. They have great partnership with Avery's Creek Elementary, which is right next door to the facility, as well as Asheville Middle. And they give of their time and their volunteerism and their financial resources locally, investing in Brother Wolf, investing in the Boys and Girls Club, Children First, Read to Succeed, The Salvation Army, and so many others. And personally, I've had the great pleasure, over a decade now, of standing with them at the front door of the facility as they welcome countless busloads of high school students and public high school teachers. They get their first exposure to the changing face of advanced manufacturing, and just as importantly, I think, the green and sustainable technologies that are really modernizing the American automotive industry here in Buncombe County. And that's fun to see a 16, 17, 18-year-old have that recognition. I think these are the kind of employers that we need more of and that will help our next generation stay, launch a career, and build their livelihoods in Buncombe County. So, on behalf of the staff and board of the EDC, the staff and board of our chamber and our 1,700 members, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you tonight, and thank you for your support of this important employer. Have a good evening.
All right. So, at this point, I'd like to bring us back to the original request. And if there's any questions from the board, we'll, of course, field those. But at this point, Chair, I would request that if you have no questions, you open the public hearing.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? If not, we'll open the public hearing. All right. I'm going to declare the public hearing open at 6:42 PM. Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment during the hearing?
I think so. We'll see.
We have one. We're contacting them right now.
Okay.
Hello. My name's Rachel Bliss, and I'm calling about the incentives. Incentives currently, I feel, are welfare programs for wealthy corporations. But they are needed now for small businesses who are closing their doors every day to the pandemic. Borg Warner says they'll relocate current employees from other locations to work here. At least they're honest, unlike Pratt and Whitney, who promised to hire only local people willing to build for the murder of dark-skinned civilians elsewhere. Good luck there. Workers here want good wages like Borg Warner offer, but they don't want to be a cog in the military-industrial complex. I don't approve of my government paying incentives, especially with no paybacks in this agreement. If I want money from a bank, I have to pay it back. However, this incentive proposal is more acceptable than the one with Raytheon, Pratt, and Whitney, which stinks. This money would go to a company that has staked out its presence here in Buncombe County. It may have military contracts, if we look hard enough, but is not one of the Big Ten like Raytheon. It builds components for hybrid vehicles, not bombs, or missiles, or military jets that can carry nuclear weapons. It isn't threatening our river like Pratt and Whitney. They are local, they are loyal to their employees, not laying off 15,000 elsewhere. And this incentive is 1/50th the size of you're giving to wealthy war profiteer Raytheon and Pratt and Whitney, whose engines are falling off commercial jets. Nevertheless, I say no to these new proposed incentives. Where in our county bylaws does it say it's prudent to award incentives to national corporations? And I'm a little perplexed that the And I'm a little perplexed that the employees aren't going up. We currently have 600, I believe, and I read that they're planning on bringing 100 employees here who would be relocated. So wouldn't that mean that they should guarantee 700 jobs rather than 600 jobs? So I appreciate you listening to my comments tonight, and I hope that you will reconsider the incentives, or at least give similar incentives to local businesses who, day by day, don't know if they'll be able to open up or not. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:46 PM. Commission, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. For Tim, Tim, you, a minute ago, I think, hinted at telling us a little bit more about innovation and product development. Is there more, just a little bit more you could tell us about the adaptability of the plant and their plans around the future and the ability to stay here? And what's exciting but changing?
Yep. Commissioner Sloan, I would ask Brian to join me. Best to hear from him at this point.
Yeah.
Of what he can reveal in terms of the future.
Right. Thank you.
So the Technical Center, as I mentioned, that's been based here with this plant for most of the 35 years it's been here. One of the technologies, or a couple of the technologies they're working on is, you may have read about e-Booster technology, which goes into hybrid electric vehicles. That product is being designed and developed here at our Technical Center. Right now, there's not a big demand for that in this market. It's primarily in Europe and a little bit in Asia, but the engineering work is done here. So should that technology catch on, we would be positioned with our current infrastructure to be able to support that. We have an additional technology, as I mentioned, in the energy sector that we have developed, again, locally. This plant is in early production phase to go into production later this year. It's a complete non-automotive technology using our turbocharging technology that we produce and manufacture there, and it's burning different fuels in order to create electricity. So that technology has been developed and will be launched locally. Additionally, from the thermal side, the technologies that we work on from the fan and fan drive, the next generation continuing to improve the efficiencies of those, that's primarily going to be located on the large diesel-type vehicles and commercial vehicles. The work that we do there improves the fuel economy, improve the fuel economy, improve emissions, and everything that goes with that. That technology is pretty mature, but there are some minor evolutions in that. Most of our advances would be on the e-turbo electrification of turbo technology.
Thank you. That's super helpful and exciting.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioners, is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion for economic development incentive for Borg Warner. Do you need two of them, or?
I think if you include that you're approving the resolution, then we capture both the agreement and the associated financial components to that.
Okay. So, yes, what Brownie said here, so the agreement between Borg Warner and Buncombe County, and what was the other?
As outlined in the resolution.
As outlined.
Yep.
Excellent.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to support the Borg Warner Economic Development Agreement and as described in the resolution. Further discussion? All right. Well, Brian, thank you for being here. We appreciate the great work the company's done in Buncombe County and the workforce that you have here, and the great work that y'all have done for many, many years. And Clark and April, thanks for the work from the Economic Development Coalition to help make these complicated projects actually come together. And Tim, thanks to you and everyone on the county team as well for all your work to get us to where we are tonight. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all so much. All right. Next, we come to the County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Commissioners. There are currently about three bills that have been introduced in the House and the Senate that are of particular interest to local government. I've asked Tim Love to share the specifics of these bills, and with us tonight, we have a few folks that can talk through if you have any questions on those bills that are being introduced.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. So as Ms. Pinder said, we have three items that we'd like to discuss with you. Once again, to get us through this, we'd like to use some slides. Thank you, Max. And so this presentation will be pretty brief, but the three bills we want to talk about are various stages in Raleigh. House Bill 35, which relates to various county public notices. House Bill 119, which relates to property tax relief for COVID-affected businesses, as well as Senate Bill 31 related to political subdivisions and local bidders notices. I'll proceed and provide some context for these, but want to make sure that I recognize Don Warren and Jennifer Pike in the audience. They've been studying, in particular, House Bill 119, and could offer more context than I can, should we need it. Would state that for the purposes of this evening, we want to provide some background on what we're seeing with these particular bills, and then if you have further questions, we can discuss those. Lot of content on this slide, but I'll summarize it for you. So HB 35, various county public notices. The purpose is generally to allow electric notices, electronic notices, to be used as we talk about public hearings, other meetings, things of that nature. Currently, the majority of our, well, all of our meeting notices are published in a newspaper and aren't necessarily on our website. The scope of this House bill would involve all notices potentially, and you can see in the sub-bullet, there's a number of counties that have sort of opted into this particular bill. I won't read them all to you, but just examples. You can see Rockingham, Montgomery, et cetera. All counties aren't included. You have to opt in as a commission, but wanted to make you aware of that. The status of this particular item, it's with the Local Government Committee, the House Local Government Committee, and they could vote on this potentially this week. Additionally, a bullet here, you know, this is supported by the NCACC. For those unfamiliar, you know, that's the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So this has long been a legislative item for them. Related to this bill but different is House Bill 51 for the eastern counties. And so this relates to exactly what it sounds like, a group of eastern counties who have a very similar bill. And you can see those listed ranging from Carteret to Hurtford and other counties on the eastern part of the state. I'm not sure the history of how we ended up with two bills, but the sense is the same, electronic notifications for public meetings. There's a few notes that we'll get to later, but there is a requirement that if this occurs, there would be a process for 12 months to make sure that folks adapt to the new process with electronic notifications, as well as the maintenance of a quote-unquote "notice book," which would be kind of your publicly available at all times so folks could see what those notices were. So that's a quick overview of HB 35. Moving on to our next one, HB 119. So this relates to property tax relief for COVID-affected businesses. The purpose of this is to provide financial relief to business by allowing them to enter into property tax payment plans, as well as the revaluation of property taxes if the business owner can demonstrate a loss of revenue. This one is interesting for a couple reasons that we'll discuss further, but the first part related to property tax payment plans, I would like to make sure the Commission is aware, is something that we've long done in Buncombe County, so this isn't, this wouldn't be a new practice. The revaluation of property taxes to a business owner who demonstrates a loss of revenue, that's a brand-new concept that's being introduced. The scope of this is businesses where COVID-19 has caused some reduction in gross revenues, and you can see there's a percentage there of 25% for retail, similarly, 25% reduction or both. So again, tying your valuation to your business revenue, which is a new concept. Status of this, referred to the Committee on Finance. If well-received, would move to Rules, Calendar, and Operations. I have a sub-bullet here for you. Once again, the NCACC opposes this legislation in its current form. Their rationale is that clearly businesses are hurting. We've talked about that many times in this chamber. However, property tax deferrals are something that statutorily we haven't done. Further, there may be other remedies to support businesses in this hard time. Shifting gears to SB 31, political subdivisions, local bidders notices. So this would require counties to, in addition to newspaper advertisements, notify interested people or businesses by regular electronic mail or by posting to a website that, basically, there's a procurement option, a procurement opportunity available. Businesses must request the notices and have a physical presence in Buncombe County. This is a change in our current process because while we advertise on our website, you know, procurement opportunities, we don't necessarily specifically, we're not required by statute specifically to reach out directly to any potential interested business. Scope of this would apply to construction or repair work or purchase of supplies and equipment over $50,000. The bill's passed the Senate and now heads to the House for further consideration. So that concludes kind of the quick overview of these three bills. Again, not looking for necessarily direction from the Board, just wanted to make you aware of those three items because they do have specific impacts to the business of our government. Also have some additional content, if you'd like to hear more, where we could talk about specific considerations and potential impacts of each bill, if that would be of interest to the Board.
Could we, I would be interested in hearing a little bit more about House Bill 119 and the potential financial impacts of that legislation on Buncombe County and our taxpayers.
Glad to do that. Max, if you don't mind, bringing the slides back up. So for each of these bills, we've provided just a quick overview of considerations and impacts. Commissioner, you did ask for 119, but since we're here, I'd like to spend a little bit of time on HB 35 as well. I would like you to know that HB 35 has come before, has come before the General Assembly on numerous occasions, as recent as 2017. The Press Association in North Carolina opposes this. However, the Association of County Commissioners is in support, so there's some conflicting views on this. In terms of impacts, financial impacts are undetermined at this point, but would potentially impact local governments that do not have to file notices, so a cost savings potentially. But also, on the other side of that coin, a potential impact to newspaper revenues. So wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Also, in terms of information accessibility, I think you could view this in many different ways. More electronic is good for some, but not for all, you know, issues related to broadband accessibility, things like that. Shifting gears to 119, again, if we have specific questions, glad to lean on Don and Jennifer, but some of the considerations to keep in mind, property tax relief or forgiveness is not currently allowed by law. So just, period. Buncombe County Tax offers payment installment plans today. That's something that Jennifer Pike and her team have done for a long time to make sure that taxpayers are able to pay over a period of time. Additionally, the appraisal and taxpayer process, or tax appeal process, is defined by law and underway today. We have a process for revaluation. There's a process for appeal. We're executing through that currently. Additionally, governmental budgets were established by law on June 30th prior to the beginning of the pandemic. So when the budget was approved last year, it was made with certain assumptions about revenue expenditures. Any change to that would, of course, create a conflict for our current budget. Additionally, and noteworthy, property tax values are based on property value and typically have no direct relationship to business revenue in either direction. So a bad year for a business typically does not impact the property tax value, just as a good year wouldn't impact the property tax value in the other direction. So those are some key points we wanted you to consider. From an impact perspective, the reality is financial impact is undetermined at this time. There's a lot of questions. It's ultimately going to be dependent on the application process that's defined in the bill, you know, which businesses are going to pursue this sort of quote-unquote "property tax refund" or "revaluation." We don't know the answer to that. Could be 100%, could be 25%. Additionally, we're not certain on how the methodology would be applied. How do we calculate, you know, business revenue loss, and how does that tie to property tax value? This isn't a formula that's, you know, just sitting out there that we normally rely on. Also, you know, not quite as interesting, but a key point, any changes like this require changes to processes for our departments, but also to technology. So it's not as simple as flipping a switch and we'll be able to do this. There would be a process and technology change that we'd have to consider. So those are quick considerations and impacts. I would ask, you know, Don or Jennifer, if there's anything you'd like to add to what I presented here. If so, feel free to join us.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Tim. Couple points I want to add. This House bill does have two sections. One is regarding payment plan. The second is regarding change in value. So I'm going to focus on the first section, the payment plan. There are a couple of aspects to that that I don't want to forget. This House bill includes refunds for those businesses that are approved for the program. So we could be issuing significant amounts of refunds in this fiscal year. Those payment plans also, as long as the businesses adhere to those plans, there's no interest. So the interest is waived. They have till the end of this calendar year to pay for their 2020 or their fiscal '21 tax liabilities. So that's just something that I'm keeping in the back of my mind because as I think through this, I think about the administering of the applications, any additional payment arrangements, which we have currently approximately 2,500 payment arrangements, and a good hunk of our business property, or our commercial, I'm sorry, commercial property taxes have been paid. So I think about the possible refunds we could be faced with if this bill passes. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have on that portion.
Keep going. Is there, if you've got more analysis on the bill, or is that, that's it?
We know that hospitality makes up a good portion of our commercial business. So those are the things that I'm thinking about. We also know that we had a lot of retail that was closed. So as I think through, but as Tim said, there are other things to consider, such as value, because this is going to affect this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Any questions from Commissioners? So I know it's, I guess just my question would be, I know it's, this is sort of a rapidly moving piece of legislation, and we don't know how it would, like, again, how many people would apply for it if it were to be enacted, but some of the preliminary analysis indicates it could be, I mean, it could be millions of dollars taken away from, that the county would have to refund back to hotels or other businesses. So, I mean, just, I guess I just would like for folks to understand the potential, very large scope of the financial impacts this would have to local governments in taking resources away from funding core services. And as we look ahead towards the budget for this year, you know, where we're hoping to lower the tax rate, but, I mean, I guess part of my concern would be if a bill like this passed, we would end up having to basically raise taxes on everyone else to fund these rebates to businesses that, you know, we understand have had a tough year, but many of which have had a great decade, you know, ahead of this tough year, and have gotten a lot of federal support, too, as well as local support to get through this. So it's, the numbers are very large based on the initial analysis. Is that right?
Absolutely, and I'm hesitant to provide an actual number just because there's so many uncertainties, but as you look at the criteria, you know, a business that's been, their revenue's been, you know, reduced effectively by 25%, easy to imagine that that's the story of many businesses in our community that, you know, were, as a result of the various, you know, local orders and state orders we've had to put in place related to the pandemic. So it could be substantial, and that's something we have to consider.
I'd love to hear y'all's thoughts on how we might move forward. I know that developing some strategies around legislated- I know that developing some strategies around legislative priorities is in the pipeline for us, but this is a sort of here and now moment. What do you all think? I'm certainly pretty concerned by what we're hearing and want to make sure that we're moving or discussing it but in taking action if there's a need or opportunity to.
Absolutely. And, you know, so we have some options. You know, clearly voicing the Commission's preferences to our local delegation would be a key step, I would think, if there's consensus among the Board. Additionally, we've seen more formal action from other Boards, namely the Henderson County Board of Commissioners recently approved a resolution related to this or related to, meaning not support in opposition to this. So those are some things that you could consider as a Board. Sort of just discussion with local delegation or something more formal in the form of a resolution.
Okay, great. And I know there's, I know Commissioner Wells is helping, has been helping to coordinate some phone calls that we're going to have with some of the local legislators to just talk these things through. So they'll definitely be having conversations. Commissioner Edwards, did you have any questions or comments? Okay, okay. Well, I just, you know, I saw a copy of the, I think Henderson County sent a, I think they emailed everyone on the Board a copy of the resolution that their Board adopted very recently. Obviously, that's, this update is great for this evening. We have, we don't have like a resolution on our agenda. But I guess, you know, thank you for the update. Let's, let's try to learn more, do more analysis, have some preliminary conversations with Representatives from our area. But if this continues to seem like it's tracking in a negative direction, then I guess I would just like to ask the staff to keep us posted. And if there is a need for the Board, if there's something else we could do in terms of adoption of a resolution, of course, we could take it up at our next meeting. If things are moving fast and we needed to do something sooner, you know, I want to make sure our voice is heard on this. So if we needed to do a special meeting or something like that to weigh in, then we're certainly able to do that. All right. Commissioners, any other questions on this for now? All right, Tim, thank you so much for the updates.
Thank you.
Ms. Pender, do you have any other items for your report? Okay, great. Okay, we have no old business on the agenda. The next item is discussion of the Ferry Road property analysis and site planning. And Tim Love is back again. He does, he does so much for Buncombe County. He really does.
Good evening, Commissioners. I didn't plan this quite as well as I thought I did, but David Tuck with Equinox, he's here to join us. And I've asked Don Warren to retrieve him for us. So he'll be here in just one second. But we can go ahead and begin to lay some of the groundwork. So this evening before you is a presentation. This is new business. We introduced this at the pre-meeting at the end of February. But I wanted to spend some more time on it today to give you an idea of what the potential opportunity is with the property analysis and then move from there. So in terms of our background and request, on October 30th of 2020, Buncombe County released an RFQ for property analysis and site planning. So that RFQ went out at the end of 2020. We received seven proposals to that RFQ. And we had an evaluation team which was able to select Equinox from those seven proposals. Equinox has provided a contract to us and that is attached to the Board's agenda today and is what is under consideration for this meeting. The contract, you know, has a number of phases in it, but to summarize it at a high level is to analyze the Ferry Road property for multi-functional usage. And so when we say multi-functional usage, you know, we're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about recreational opportunities. We're talking about environmental stewardship. All of these items relate directly to the Board's Buncombe 2025 strategic plan. And so the purpose of this project would be simply to bring alternatives to the Board for consideration of what to do with that property. Today, the action before the Board is to authorize the County Manager to contract with Equinox to perform this site study. For those that are unaware, the Ferry Road property is on this map and indicated by the call-out box that says "Subject Property." You can see that the property is nested on the French Broad River off of Drive Ferry Road, which is, for those that are not familiar, right off of Brevard Road 191. This property has been in ownership of the county for a number of years and has been identified for other development purposes, including industrial as well as residential. But as discussed, the purpose today is to examine that using Equinox to identify multi-functional usage beyond just residential and/or industrial. The scope of services for this contract, it's a phased approach. And the key to that is there are specific decision points and optional tasks that are built into this contract. And the reason we structured it as such is we wanted to give the Board options to effectively pull the plug or proceed, if you like what you're seeing. Additionally, there's optional tasks that we wanted to build in to get additional detail if we needed, but we didn't want to sort of build those into the price unless we needed to. A very key to this project is an emphasis, first and foremost, on environmental and natural resource assessment. And so when David steps to the podium, he'll be able to describe that to you. But we wanted to make sure that there was an inventory done of the property to understand what potential impacts would occur environmentally and make sure that we were preserving this property. Additionally, and critical to this site is the need for improved transportation and access. The site is currently, I'll call it landlocked and would benefit greatly from additional road infrastructure before any development could take place. Again, mixed-use development is the name of the game here with strategic plan alignment. So very interested in affordable housing potentially on this site, both in terms of dense housing, but also home ownership opportunities as well as recreational opportunities, since we're nested right there on the French Broad River. And then finally, some type of environmental stewardship. That's a part of the natural resource assessment and that's something we want to keep at the front of our mind. From a public engagement standpoint, there's community and public input throughout the process. We have structured it though, that during Phase 1, there will be some limited input from the public because we want to get a sense from the Board first on whether or not you want to proceed with the project. If after Phase 1, the Board is in agreement that this is something we want to further pursue, we have a plan for full and detailed public input and engagement with sort of the local, the neighbors, as well as the community organizations that have an interest in the property. With that said, that's just kind of laying some context for the project. What I'd like to do at this point is invite David Tuck to the podium and he can provide additional detail on the project's scope, what some of the deliverables may be and answer any questions you might have on that.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Tim did an excellent job just summarizing everything, so you might not have too many questions for me. But I wanted to do just a couple of things. I wanted to first introduce you to the team who would be working on this project. I wanted to take you through the product approach with a little bit more detail and show some examples of what we're talking about with some of the deliverables. So the very first thing is I'm with Equinox. We've been here since 2000. And so you might know us from our work with recreation planning work. So we do a lot of park and greenways in Buncombe County. But we also do land planning projects. We've done mixed-use conservation subdivision design and field development for all those years as well. So we have land planners, landscape architects, recreation planners, ecologists as well. We have Lord Eck Sargent joining us. They're actually an architectural planning firm from Atlanta. You might ask, why are we teaming with a firm that's from Atlanta? Well, the reason is they're actually doing affordable housing work in Asheville right now. We also have traffic planning and design. They're a local firm and we've worked with them on several projects when it comes to transportation-related issues. So they bring the transportation planning, transportation design, transportation engineering. That's going to be a very critical component to the project. And then there's wood engineering. I've worked with Tony Hauser of Wood Engineering many times over the years. And so he's a civil engineer and a landscape architect. So he brings that aspect to the project as well. So we have a really nice team that's very diverse in terms of the skill set that we bring. And we think that's really appropriate for this project. A little bit about the approach. So as Tim mentioned, there's a first phase, a second and a third phase. And basically, first phase is what you're seeing on your screens right now. And so I'm going to go through this kind of quickly so I can leave. If you have questions, we can do it that way because I don't want to get too detailed for you this evening unless you really want me to. But we're going to start with a leadership team to really develop vision and goals for the project. That's key. And those vision and goals will come from your strategic plan, from your comprehensive plan and whatever some of these leaders think that we should be focusing on. The site analysis and natural resource assessment was mentioned. So that's when our landscape architects, our planners, ecologists go out on site and really look for the botanical, natural plant communities, habitat, water resources, all those things that kind of make up the natural resources of this particular property. And so that's really a fundamental component to the work that we do because then after we have that information, then we can start to do the planning work and really start to lay out what's possible for the property. The transportation access and assessment, that might start in Phase 1 and happen a little bit throughout the project. But the importance of looking at how we are getting into the property is very critical and then also within the property itself, once we can gain access. You know, there was a previous development for this property, Riverwood subdivision. Not all the transportation issues were addressed during that project. And so we are aware of those. And actually, traffic planning and design was involved in that early planning. So we have those folks on the team to help look at that specifically. So once we look at all the natural resources and we're on the property, we build what we call a suitability plan. And this is kind of a rendering, a graphic of what that could look like. And it really helps us identify the areas that are suitable for development and building and the areas that should be protected and set aside in conservation or just as open space. From there, we're going to start to develop some what we're calling sustainability diagrams. So this is really before we get into detailed concepts. And that's where we'll come back to you all. We'll give you a presentation on all the findings and we'll ask you at that point, do you want us to continue or have you seen enough? That's going to be an important component. So once we do the suitability plan, then we develop the framework diagrams. And so in the previous image, you kind of saw the use areas for either what should be built upon or what can be conserved or put into open space. Now we start to get into defining what some of these spaces could be used for. So in this example, this is from a project we worked on. It's just saying, okay, in parcel A, you know, this is the appropriate type of development, a low-density development approach. And parcel B, conservation subdivision approach. And we give the factors of why we're looking at that. So that's information, again, that we're going to share with you at the end of Phase 1. So if you give us the green light to proceed, that's really when we get into more detailed stakeholder engagement with the, with key community members. It's also when we're going to start in earnest the public engagement process. So up to this point in Phase 1, we're going to create what we're calling a project page for the public so they can understand why we're doing the project, general timeline and maybe some answers to typically asked questions. That'll happen in Phase 1. In Phase 2, we're going to really build that out with a website and have public engagement and a survey so we can have input. From there, once we've talked to the public, to the stakeholders, to the leadership team, then we really develop scenarios for the property. And that could be based on low, medium, high density. But it also will look at affordable housing, recreational opportunities and sustainability. And you can see under, towards the end of the image or the flow chart on the left side, there's a lot of bullets from conceptual illustrative site plans, excuse me, to mass scaling diagrams. There's a lot there that we're working with civil engineers, the architects, landscape architects as part of the team. So from there, we'll develop a final plan. And then that will be a document and we'll also have some renderings. This is kind of an important part of the process because a lot of people can understand better graphically than reading a lot of text. And so we plan to really showcase the design character and intent of the different scenarios that we're developing. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Tim.
Right. Thank you, David, for that kind of overview of the project. Again, a phased approach with decision points throughout. So in terms of the contract, which is attached to the agenda, this is a summary of that. And so you can see in Phase 1, there's a not-to-exceed price of about $60,000. The key deliverables here, as we talked about, a natural resource inventory, suitability plan, transportation access, as well as an online project page to sort of set the stage for what's coming and how the public can be engaged. Key to this, there is a decision point at the end of Phase 1. We've talked about that. If we look into Phase 2 and 3, total cost there is about $90,000 if you choose to proceed. Here, we're talking about much more in-depth public engagement, as David described, but also fleshing out the scenarios to go from more conceptual into more actual what you can expect. If there's no questions, which you're welcome to ask, the request today before the Board is to authorize the County Manager to execute a contract with Equinox. And that's the contract that's been attached to your agenda. But with that said, I'd ask if you have any questions, anything for David or I.
At this time? Is there a motion regarding the?
I'll go ahead and ask one. How long are you looking at, excuse me, on timeline on Phase 1, how long it would take?
I think we had two to three months.
So we have two to three months anticipated for Phase 1. And then for the remaining phases, we think we could move forward with those. I think we had on the, on the flow chart that we showed, I believe it maybe had four-month period for that. So four to six months in total for the whole project potentially.
But we will just be voting tonight on Phase 1 and coming back before Phase 2 and 3, correct?
That's correct.
Or the contract has the option to discontinue after Phase 1 if we choose. Once we get a, we'll get a report back after Phase 1 is done and we can, we'll have another decision point at that time.
That's correct.
So we're voting for both Phase 1, 2 and 3, but we can come back and?
That's right. So the contract has all the three phases in it, but it has a language that says we can, we can choose not to go to Phase 2 if we decide that we have enough information at that point.
Absolutely.
Great.
Tim, I'm hoping you can, or your colleague, opine on suitability plan that I see in Phase 1. I understand that the long-term goal is to get site development scenarios. So I'm trying, just trying to understand what exactly we're getting for our 60K under that first phase.
Absolutely. David?
That's a really good question. And the suitability plan is really the culmination of all the information we're collecting. So it's existing conditions, it's all the fieldwork information from being onsite, it's the natural resource inventory. And so we're taking all that information and we're mapping it. And so once we have that, it's really defining the areas where you can develop most sustainably and the areas that you maybe shouldn't be really developing. Or there are natural assets that can be an attribute to the overall project. So that's the process of getting to that suitability plan. We can't get to a suitability plan unless we do all that work to get to that point. And then once we have that, then we can really focus on the more detailed conceptual design within the appropriate buildable areas, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you.
I have another question. We've had this property sold or under contract several times, haven't we? Two times, the brewery and the California base.
That's correct.
Did they do any study? I mean, what information have we got on it now?
So the, the most recent, the Riverwoods development, there was some time spent on that. We don't actually have access to those materials. However, the team that has been brought to the table includes the traffic design consultant for Riverwoods. And so we'll have detailed insight into the issues there. And basically, we'll be able to get a?
we'll be able to get a head start.
And sort of developing some good solutions so that, because obviously, unless it's just completely, well, even if it was just recreational, you're probably still going to need some parking and things like that for, for access. So a key part of it's going to be looking at, what are some good solutions to address the access to the property, right? For whatever uses might end up being deployed there in the future. And, because that's obviously been, what we've heard from some of the previous folks, is that those are some of the challenges that need to be resolved for a successful plan for the site. So that's part of what I'm hoping we're going to make some progress on compared to the previous efforts from other folks.
Right now, I guess I've got mixed feelings on that, because we've only got one right-of-way into the place. And it's going to take, if it's developed very heavily, we're going to have DOT involved in it. Where if we can get the right-of-way of another one that we had talked about, I could see where it'd make that land a lot more valuable for us to get rid of.
But I think, I think kind of fleshing that out is going to be part of what this group does for us, is to really help us kind of take the idea of an additional access easement and really taking that from kind of a concept to exactly what would be the best way to do it. So I think I'm in total agreement that that's, that's important.
Yeah, I mean, I agree too. If, I'm all for Phase One. I guess I'm looking at Two and Three, that spend an extra $90,000 and we don't get access in and have to go through fixing a highway, or waiting on DOT to come in and repair that road. I know that very, very well out there.
Right.
That's my big concern, so.
I, I, I'm in total agreement, Commissioner Presley. I think we've got to make some progress on those questions that you're raising. Hopefully, we will in Phase One. Otherwise, you know, it may not make sense to go to the next phases unless we're feeling more comfortable around that stuff. So I'm, I'm with you totally. Other questions, comments from the board? Is there a motion on the contract?
I move to authorize the county manager to enter a contract with Equinox.
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, Tim and David, thanks for the presentation tonight. We look forward to hearing back from you in the not-too-distant future. So thanks for working with us on this.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Don Warren, our finance director, is going to talk to us about a resolution authorizing execution of an inter-local agreement, creating a North Carolina investment pool. We've talked about this some at our recent briefing meeting, so thanks for coming back to discuss further.
I'm happy to be here. Perfect. So, just to kind of run through, kind of a reminder, since I was back in December when I was here last, we had to have some meetings with the LGC, Local Government Commission, back and forth, question and answer, those sort of things, to get them to a point where they were comfortable with what we were doing. An LGIP is a cooperative investment vehicle, so it is not owned by any particular government, but it takes two governments to form it. So it forms a trust, that trust becomes a separate legal entity, and then other governments in North Carolina that are subject to Chapter 159 can invest in that pool. It operates similar to the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, which is a money market, but there's some nuances there. Nationally, there's over 144 LGIPs. The majority of those have obtained a rating from a national organization, so that being Standards and Poor's, Fitch, or Moody's. This LGIP would do the same thing. And currently, the big impetus for doing this is, we have one option, really, for our idle cash now. The NCCMT used to have two different funds. We could split our pots of money between a term fund, or a liquid fund and a term fund. And they closed the term fund because of the interest rate environment and that sort of thing. So now we have one option, or we have Wells Fargo, which is our main bank. We really can't keep the amount of money that we have in Wells Fargo, creates issues for them. So that's one of the big reasons that we are moving forward. So to remind you, the basic governance structure, so the investors are North Carolina local governments. The governance is made up of Board of Trustees, which are elected by the participants in this LGIP. And then the Board of Trustees is responsible for bylaws, contracting with the service providers, which includes the investment advisor and the administrator, the custodial bank, legal counsel, transfer agent, and, as well as the auditor. So the steps in creating this, we have completed the draft resolution, or we have drafted the resolution, the inter-local agreement, and the indenture of trust. So next up, we need to execute a resolution and corresponding inter-local agreement to actually form the trust. Once that is completed, then the form, we form the Board of Trustees, they adopt the bylaws, then they obtain the investment advisors, select those service providers, which I mentioned before, go out and obtain a credit rating, and then we're ready to market to these other local governments that we know that are kind of waiting in the wings, waiting for us to do all the heavy lift. And then folks can start investing in the pool, and then everything's smooth sailing from that point forward. We have another option for local governments in North Carolina. So the inter-local agreement, some of the key components that I want to point out, the trust and indenture establishes the LGIP, and it's empowered by the Board of Trustees. The LGIP and the indenture will survive this inter-local agreement. So, once it's formed, Buncombe and Wake County could withdraw, and then the LGIP is its own self-sustaining entity, which others could then invest in. No officer, agent, or employee of any party will be subject to any personal liability or accountability for executing this agreement. And only those local governments, subject to General Statute 159, can actually invest in this. So it's only for municipalities and counties. And then after establishment of this, either party, if they chose to, can withdraw from it, or they can continue to move forward and invest in the trust, like any other government will have the option to do. So that's kind of the inter-local agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I've provided you a lot of information since December, answered a lot of questions, but I'm happy to answer any more questions or provide information.
Don? Who would make up the Board of Trustees?
Initially, it will be myself, and then the CFO from Wake County. We have a couple other individuals that will be appointed once they adopt the indenture of trust to start investing in the LGIP. And the initial trustees will be, I think our term is, I want to say five years. There'll be a total of seven trustees, once the thing is up and running.
Who would be the other five?
We would have to, well, they would be participating entities, so other local governments that would be investing in the LGIP, and then we would be able to vote to appoint them. Since there's only going to be the two initially, there's going to be two trustees.
Would all the trustees be CFOs?
Well, most, I don't know. It's possible. It would be from a member from a participating organization. It could be a CFO, it could be an accounting manager, it could be a budget officer, if somebody had the interest in investments and wanted to be there. It could be an investment officer. It really could be anybody that would make sense to sit on as a trustee. Because you have to have some, some knowledge of investments, what's legal under state statute. Granted, we will have PFM as the administrator and investment advisor, who will do all the actual transactions and that sort of thing. But as a trustee, you still have to have an understanding of what's going on, and if they're telling you things, you need to actually know what they're saying.
That's my question.
Would each, would each unit of government that joins select their own person, or would the current trustees approve the additional trustees?
Um, you, let's say that, we'll say that Henderson County wanted to join. They could appoint or nominate somebody, and then the rest of the participants, whoever else is in there, would vote if we had an opening, and they could be selected to fill the seat.
Okay, so they would propose someone, and you'd have to, the current trustees would need to concur?
Correct.
Terry, you had a lot of questions about this. I apologize for digging into this really deep. What are your, what are your thoughts or questions about this?
Well, and I really appreciate all your answers to my questions there, Don, but could you also just kind of rehash some of that, some of the safety around this, as well as what the investments will be in, so there's that broader knowledge and understanding?
Oh, sure. One of the big questions that you had asked is, you know, what safeguards are in place to protect our money if we were to invest in the LGIP? The biggest safeguard is it's going to be a stable NAV, which is a stable net asset value. That means that for every dollar you go get put in, you're going to get a dollar back when you take it out. An LGIP, the way it is structured, is really designed to give you that security. If you had a variable NAV, you're chasing rate of return, it's not a good risk for the return rate there for public funds. Other things that, you know, I have your email. We were busy this weekend. One of the things that you had also asked was about credit rating for the LGIP, and with PFM as the advisor and administrator, they have four, what have they got? I think they're managing nationwide right now. Gosh, I want to say ninety, oh, $35 billion, and they have 17 other LGIPs nationally that they're running. All of those have AAA ratings, so it is our, we anticipate, as we get this set up, that this one would also be rated AAA, which is what we would want. Other items of interest, you know, by the time we get all the legal stuff all ironed out, there's some fees that are involved in that. The county is not on the hook for any of those fees. It's actually going to be paid for from the earnings that would occur in the LGIP. So we would get paid dividends based on the number of shares we had, and it's basically net of fees. The other thing is, how much could we possibly earn? What kind of rate of return? While that is not a significant concern right now, it's number three on the list, you know, behind, behind safety and liquidity. We would anticipate, because management fees would be lower than what the current trust is, we should earn more of a rate of return, which is a bonus, but it's not the number one driver for doing this.
And then I think you said, was it about 10 million that you were looking to put in there currently? Is that?
Yeah, probably.
Mm-hmm.
It would depend on how many others want to get started, and how much other people are investing and that sort of thing, but probably initially around 10 million. And then over time, as it grows, we would look at putting more money in there and taking it out of the trust, or as deposits come in, just moving it in there.
And what are some of the typical investments that this fund would be made in?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
What are some of the typical investments?
Oh, so what, what a LGIP does, similar to a money market, which is the trust. The trust is a money market, so they can purchase treasuries and agencies. That's what they can purchase. An LGIP can purchase those, plus other items that are legally allowed under state statute, which could be some commercial paper and that sort of thing. So that's why, and another reason, they could potentially earn a higher rate. But everything that they would invest again, invest in has to be approved by state statute, and our investment policy would also have to allow it.
Don, do I remember correctly that if additional monies are transferred in, it does not have to come back to us for approval?
That's correct. It would be like any other investment that I could purchase under state statute, and I would follow the investment policy. And then, as you know, as I'm bringing the quarterly reports, I'm including the investments report with that.
Avril, do you have any concerns about this proposal?
No, sir. We've talked through this, and as he mentioned, we would start slow, we would not go all-in at first. But our plan would be, as we wrap this up, then we can look to have ways to diversify our portfolio. So right now, we are so early in this getting it set up, and we're working with LGC, so at this point, no, no, sir.
You know, the only concern I had was about the trustees. I didn't want this to become political, but you answered my question. We'll have the professionals doing it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep it out of your hands.
Yeah, where it should be.
Any other questions, or is there?
One final quick question. At some point in the future, should we want to exit this? Is that a fairly simple thing to do?
Yeah, we would just put in a request, and we'd redeem our, our shares, and we would get our money back.
Thank you.
Backdoor.
Yeah. And just, so you're aware, this was on Wake County's agenda last night, and they passed it, so. Once you all make your decision, then I will move forward appropriately.
Is there a motion to approve, or?
I move, I move that we approve.
Second?
Entering.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. All right, next up is consideration of funding items postponed during FY21 budget process, and Jennifer Barnett's going to present this item.
So we brought to you during the February 16 briefing, a request for personnel positions in addition to the purchase, a request to purchase audit management software. And since our last review with you, the, in discussion with the county manager and with other departments, further evaluation and consideration of organizational needs have occurred. And our previous request, which included an evidence and property technician, we are respectfully requesting to withdraw that request. But we are requesting, in, in addition to the five EMT paramedics, the eight library assistants, which are part-time, we are requesting one planner, two position. So in discussion with Nate Pennington, the, the planning director, we have, we're, he's encountering a current surge in workload related to the implementation of electronic plan review software, but more importantly, is requesting that we add the planner position in advance of approving or bringing to you for approval, the comprehensive plan, so that the department will be able to adequately prepare for the development and implementation, or the development of the plan. So this evening, in addition to these positions, still for consideration, is a request to approve the purchase of the new internal audit software. I'm happy to review any of the particular fiscal year '21 estimated costs, or the fiscal year '22 costs, but the positions are here on the slide for consideration.
Okay, and so for approval, we would need approval of the positions themselves, as well as the associated budget amendment?
So we don't actually have a budget amendment, you know, with our review of the current revenue trends, in addition to our available CARES Act funding, where we've been able to divert some of those salaries to be covered by that, that federal fund. We do have some lap, and disusual turnover. We have lapsed salary savings that we would propose for fiscal year '21 to cover the April through June period for the salary and benefit expenditures.
Okay, so you would need budget approval for the audit management and data analytics item? Okay, so you don't need any budget amendment, only approval of?
That's correct. We are proposing that we can cover this with savings for the current fiscal year.
Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying the, what needs approval. All right, so commissioners, you know, I've been, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I had a few questions for staff since the last meeting, and we talked about this at the briefing. And, you know, one of the questions I've been thinking about this on, for this proposal is, you know, we're in the budget, we're, we're moving into the budget process. is, you know, we're in the budget, we're, we're moving into the budget process, we're going to be looking at a lot of, a lot of HR decisions as part of that process and other priorities. So, you know, part of me felt like, you know, why don't we, why don't we weigh these positions and associated, you know, most of these are going to be recurring costs. So I understand that the budget for this year is covered through savings, but realistically, when we take on these positions, the most important consideration is the recurring, you know, cost of, associated with that. So why not, why don't we take that on as part of the overall budget process? So, I mean, in conversations with, with staff about this, I'm, you know, I've been persuaded that some of these are pretty, you know, there's a very strong argument to do them now. And the paramedic's positions, I think certainly are in there, and the planning position in association with being prepared for the, for the comprehensive plan. I agree with that. The, so I guess the, you know, proposal I would like to ask the commission to consider would be to go ahead and approve those positions, but to look at the library positions as part of the budget process that we're going to be taking up over the next several months and make a decision on those positions as part of the regular budget process. So I'll make that as a motion. Further discussion or questions?
However, it does include the audit software.
Could you clarify that, Jennifer? So we don't actually need to approve the audit software as part of this decision tonight? There's already the funding to do it, and it's more of a letting the commission know we're moving ahead with that?
That's correct. We don't need a budget amendment. However, we, I do believe that we would like an acknowledgement from the board.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, include that in the motion.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to include, you know, the recognition that that's being procured and moving ahead as well. It's part of, it's part of the motion. Commissioner Presley, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, so we're three of them, and the only one out is the library board going into the budget.
That's right. That the positions in the library would be, we're going to consider that, we're going to continue to consider it in the budget process and make a decision on that over the next couple of months as part of the, the budget process. Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Is there any reconsideration that we can talk about on the library assistance at this point, or no, sir?
Sure, I'm happy to hear any, any, any comments on?
I was trying to turn my microphone on.
Okay, sorry.
I'll leave it to you before the vote. I'll leave it to you.
To ask our county manager to share with us more about the need for those right now versus waiting for the budget cycle.
Okay. And I do have Jim Blanton here from the library board. I know he's anxious to actually say something about these positions, so.
Sure. Thanks for being here, Jim.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me. So I will tell you, when I first came here, one of the first things that was put in my field of awareness was our challenges around staffing. Performance Management had already done a study of the needs to some degree before I came on board, and we started talking about that right away. Just to give you some context, over the past nineteen years, we've gone from a headcount of 137 to 111, while we opened two branches, expanded a couple of others, and now on the verge of opening East. So we've lost positions while we've grown, and our population has grown, right? So that's one factor. So we deep dove into this with Performance Management to see what's our ideal staffing. And that means, just on a baseline level, operating safely, operating with more than one person at a location at any given time, being able to provide good customer service, and also just, you know, doing things which I would call basic, which are offering programming for youth, doing outreach in the community, things that you expect are kind of standards. And those are all super challenging at our current staffing levels. Just to give you some, some additional information, working with Performance Management, what they've landed on in looking at both our operating hours, our current staffing levels, and then looking at our staff positions based on the hours they need to perform the tasks that are associated with those positions, it really lands on a headcount of five FTE for most locations to operate effectively. Right now, our FTE count at locations ranges from 1.5 to 4.5, with most being somewhere between three and four. PAC has 12, but they have multiple service points, so it really lands in kind of that same zone, too. So we're, we're under that five everywhere right now, that kind of just baseline to provide, you know, basic services I just mentioned. In addition to that, going back to the idea that, you know, we don't have solo staff members working at locations, and doing an analysis of the hours where that happens, at a minimum, pre-COVID, 51 hours each week, you would find a staff member working solo at a location, which is really, in my mind, unacceptable. So what we worked out was a multi-year strategy where we would phase in gradually going toward getting to that five FTE at each location, right? Varies at a couple of locations, but generally, that's kind of the target we're shooting for. This request represents kind of that first ask to get towards that goal. It's really a lifeline. It's not, it's not just a basic request. It's, it's, it's really something that's been desperately needed for a long time. In fact, I know they alluded to it in the facilities presentation, but they did a benchmarking study where they compared us against peer libraries across the country. And what they noted in, in the report was that BCPL has the heaviest population burden on staff and the least staff per location when looking at our peers, indicating that staff is stretched thin, given the number of residents and the number of locations. We have a lot of locations in the system. And the study also recommended reviewing whether it's safe to have so few staff per location as an area for additional investigation, which was no surprise to us because it's, it's pretty clear that we're short-staffed. So really, I would, I would, I would suggest to you that this is really important. It's not, it's, we're not being frivolous here, and we're in no danger of overshooting by asking for these eight. So I would really appreciate your consideration around it. One thing I'll also add, Commissioner Wells, you'd asked for us to check in with the staff about what their thoughts were on the facility study. So I've met with every staff at every location, and they're all excited about the potential, you know, and the vision for the future that that could represent. But the recurring theme is, we shouldn't lay one brick until we have enough staff to operate these locations. And I agree 100%. The board said that, too, when they received the presentation from the consultant. So that's, that's a universal sentiment, is that we've got to staff these locations properly before we think about trying to be aspirational. That's, that's number one. So that's, that's the long and short. I'm having to answer any questions about it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Could you, I know to you it's very obvious, but to us, I think perhaps not. Could you just walk through the reasons why it's not a good idea to have one staff person in a, let's say it's a smaller branch location?
You have to go to the restroom. What happens? You have to go to lunch. What happens? There's no, you've got no out there. What if there's an angry patron, which certainly happens, and now is a, you know, at a heightened level in some regards because of the, you know, the angst that's surrounding the pandemic? So it's, it's a safety issue, and you have cash on hand, too, at all of those locations, you know, we take money in. So there are any number of reasons why you would not want one person working there. And, and just on, from a customer service perspective, what if you get five people who come through the door? How do you help five, you know, it's, it's just, it's really unmanageable for one person. It's a lot of stress in addition to just the safety consideration.
And how would you describe sort of the perspective or morale of library staff currently as they're navigating all this?
Not good. Not good. And that has, and that's pre-pandemic. The Performance Management folks told me when they were doing their interviews before I came on board, they said that staff were in tears when they were talking to them about the, you know, how thinly they felt stretched. And let me just say this, too. I know I've said this before, but this is an amazing staff. I'm, I'm not just saying that. They really are wonderful. They're, they're innovative, they're dedicated, they're passionate. So this is not, you know, something where they're, you know, just, it's not a gripe. This is, this is a real concern, that they're, they feel stretched thin. Another thing I, that I didn't bring up here in that same benchmarking report, it also noted that we do the most programming of the peer libraries, and they're the most well-attended of the peer libraries. And that also balanced against the fact that we're understaffed compared to our peers. It's, it's amazing. It really is, the work that they do. And so it's, it makes it all the more important to really support them and, and show them that they're valued.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Other questions?
I don't have any other questions, but I would like for us to reconsider this proposal, really coming at it from a perspective of being proactive on the safety front versus reactive, and not waiting until something serious happens at one of our libraries before we decide to step in, particularly hearing that patrons have expressed anger, particularly right now, I think folks are just generally a bit angrier and more anxious, and I would hate for that to result in a negative situation for one of our county employees. And then turn the library into a place where people don't want to go because something bad happened.
So, you know, I think you did a great job making the case for this, Jim. And to be clear, I'm not, I don't have a position against doing this. You know, my, my request is that we look at all this as part of the budget process, which we're effectively entering now, and we're going to make a decision on it in about three months from now. You know, there's, I think there's good arguments for all this. I think it's likely to probably be approved either, either tonight or during the budget process. But just from a, you know, from a decision-making standpoint, part of the reason I, I think it's worthwhile to do that is, I mean, there are a lot of public safety concerns in this community right now. We have an epidemic of gun violence in this community, that the likes of which we've really never seen before. There are, there, I anticipate we are going to have a lot of different, very compelling, competing demands on, on this board as we go into this budget process. We're coming out of a year unlike one we have really never experienced before, and it's just putting a lot of challenges on the organization, a lot of challenges on the community. One of the challenges is going to be, of course, we're going to want to try to lower the tax rate because it's a revaluation year, so we know we're going to lower it, but how much can we do that? So I, I really am persuaded you're making a very solid case for this. And if it's approved tonight, I think that's, you know, that's, there's a lot of good arguments for it. But anyway, for all those different reasons, I would like to be able to weigh the good arguments that are being made for this, along with the other, I think, very good arguments we're going to hear from a lot of other quarters tonight as it relates to delivery of our services and public safety, and a lot of other priorities that the commission's considered. So anyway, but I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this. It's a, it's a good discussion. Other, other comments?
I think, Jim, what really you changed me on this is that I'd forgotten that going pre-pandemic, the library was already in bad shape when you look, well, not bad shape. We've got good people, but they need the support there they didn't have then. And coming out of this, and with what's going on with the new East Asheville and all, and and just having one person and just security, you know, I've got some, I've got some problems with that, Brownie. I think we need to go with this. I mean, you know, I'd hate for something to happen in one of those facilities, simply because that's not giving them a few people. Let's think about it.
Yeah, I understand the point. I mean, the, you know, look, we can, there, there are, there are lots of, there are lots, there are thousands and thousands of people in Bunkham County who work in jobs where they work by themselves every day. I mean, I get the reasons why ideally you'd have more than one person, but it is the reality that very large percentages of our constituents work in, it's an environment they work in, you know, day in and day out. And again, I think there's a lot of other places that if we were going to prioritize funds for public safety, and you objectively rank them, you know, I think it's a question of where you would decide to invest those funds if you looked at it that way. Parker, Terry, why don't you guys weigh in on this? Let's just, let's just go and figure out what the board wants to do in this, so we can.
Ken, I'll say something first here. Jim, I mean, I appreciate you taking interest in your people like that, and that's what we need more of, people standing up for what they believe is right. And I believe that is right. And I would like to see if we can get the commission to go ahead and stay as the motion we got, and put this on the next meeting. That wouldn't be putting it out three months. Where, I think we need more information on the, I think we need more people there, but tonight, I, I mean, I would like not to vote to do that and put it on in two weeks from now, put it on at the next commission meet, where we can really go out and look at this more. I'm not saying we don't need them. I'm saying I need more time, or I'm going to have to vote no tonight.
Okay. Appreciate that. Terry, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'm struggling because I do get the point of we're, we're so close in looking at it in the budget and that process. But I, I do, I do feel that it is compelling that this is needed, and it, I think it's really incumbent on us to make sure that we have the staffing that we need in our various jobs. And it sounds like not only is it a safety issue, but it is a quality of service issue in what you can provide. And that is very important for us to be thinking about as well. So I'm leaning toward going ahead and approving it.
All right. I'd like to withdraw my motion because I think a majority of the board wants to go ahead and approve this item tonight, too. So I'm going to withdraw the motion, and I'll make a new motion that we approve those positions as well. All right. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right. Further discussion? Mr. Frue?
Excuse me, I think you need the consent of, of Mr. Presley.
Yeah, he's second.
All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Presley, will you consent to withdrawal of the motion that we made?
Jim, honestly, and everyone at the library, I'm, I'm for this, and I understand everyone. We went through this one year ago, whenever this pandemic started. And if you recall, my concern was, what do we do when we have these people in the small businesses trying to mandate masks when we was, should have asked them, you know, please wear a mask? And I'm hearing the same thing tonight, that we done one year ago and didn't do it. And that's what my concern is, and, and the budget. Our budget, I mean, it's not long, and I don't think waiting two weeks till the next meeting would really, Jim, I mean, would you consider, I mean, could this hold off for a couple of weeks? And I don't want to put you on the spot, but, I mean.
While he's thinking about that, we did have this in the July budget, and we did put it off because of COVID. So it has been put off since July through now, so.
Yeah, but our library's been down a lot during COVID, too, correct?
What we need to bring back to you?
Yeah, but because we didn't, because we deferred it, I think this is the first time it's getting, the debate it's getting.
Yeah, we, we agreed to bring it back after our collections from property tax, so we can see revenues. We didn't want to be irresponsible and fund this without having a revenue source to do that, so. But to Mr. Commissioner Presley's point, if you bring this back in two weeks, what more do you need to see to help people with that? Do you just need to talk to employees?
Yeah, I'd like to go because I do speak with the employees in a couple of the district and around, and, you know, I believe we, we're going to need them. Yes, I know that, Jim. But you know, what I was prepared for tonight was looking at being able to pull this out. This is going to be a tough budget year for us, a very tough year. And, you know, my concern is, I like to take care of our employees here, but I like to take care of the constituents out there, too. And this is not a lot of money compared to a lot of things we do, but that's where I'm at right now. And yes, I can pull it if we've got a six to one, and, you know, we're going to still get it passed, so.
Okay.
Someone can make a new motion, so I will.
You're, okay, but I'm sorry. Did you say you will withdraw the motion?
I will withdraw.
All right. So that motion was withdrawn. You know, I guess just based on what I've heard, though, I mean, my sense is that a majority of the board actually does have enough information to vote on it tonight. So, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we approve that, those positions tonight, along with the others.
Second.
I'd like to continue this conversation, too. I think that this is a good discussion. I think it's going to fold into the budget process, and there's, there's more to be discussed. But if the majority of the board's got the enough information to make the decision, then just in the spirit of efficiency, too, I'm, I'm happy to go ahead and make the decision tonight. Any other comments on this?
Ronnie, my only, my only last comment is that I don't feel strongly about the library positions, whether we discuss it today or three months from now. As someone that hasn't gone through the budget process before, I just feel a little concerned about this agenda item as a whole, and just the idea. about this agenda item as a whole, and just the idea of just thinking about just these couple of departments. To your point earlier about the complexity of the budget process, it just seems like a discussion we should be having in the broader context, but that's my, that's my only thought.
You make sound points, Parker. All right, any, anyone else? Okay.
Just, again, because this is a little different than we usually do things, but what I understand that we are hearing from staff is that this is the top-tier priorities to address, and we are now in a position where we can sort of, in a fiscally sound way, address these. So these were the sort of orphaned priorities last budget cycle. Now that we're in a position where we have a little breathing room, these are the very first priorities that staff would bring forward.
Yes, ma'am, that was left over from last year. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that, to me, that helps mitigate some of the concerns about, that have been raised. But I, but I, but I, to the points that both Robert and Brownie have said, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, I just am persuaded to support this tonight.
Yes, it's very hard for me, too, you know, to sit here because there's four items, and they are four things that's put off. I mean, even our audit software, we've been waiting on two years, is so important with what's going on, and we've got it. I guess just packaging four things in one is what I really don't like doing, you know, of putting them out. So, tonight, I would love to talk about it in two weeks if it's not a life and death thing, where I would have more information, but as of today, you know, I'll vote for the three, but the one is the only reason why I'm going no.
Understood, understood. Any, any other comments? All right, I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this, and Jim, appreciate your thoughts on this, too. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, all right, thank you all. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion of the compensation study, Phase Three recommendations, and Sharon Burke's going to present this item.
Good evening. So I wanted to do an overview of Phase Three and the findings from Phase Three tonight. So the first slide we have is just an overview of where we have come. So if you recall, back in 2018, Evergreen came in, did a study, was looking at our peers, and one of the, the primary goals that they were working on was creating job descriptions. But more than that, some of the, the, the interesting findings that they had was that we didn't really have a plan for compensation, and we needed a philosophy, and so, but that wasn't part of the scope of their work, so they provided us some information. And on top of that, they also looked and said that we have some internal equity issues that we really needed to address. So then we hit 2019, and at that point, you know, Avril has come in, and, and she was reading, you know, the information in here, and so what she did was requested that the staff form a compensation group. And in this compensation group, they were putting together our compensation philosophy. And of the, the employees that, that joined this group, there's 22 departments, and they actually created a compensation philosophy that I'll show you in just a second. From this, what we did was we then took the recommendations from this compensation philosophy and moved into our compensation study, and that's where we are right now. Another point that I, I also want to make sure that you're aware of is that Evergreen also helped push the, the needle forward on the $15 an hour living wage for all regular part-time and full-time employees. So here's the philosophy that was created by, by our employees, and, you know, as I mentioned earlier, it was 22 departments, so it was really a lot of work that, that these employees got together. There was a lot of discussions, and some really, really great work came out of it, and, and if you want, I can read it, but I think you all have seen it already. So here we are. This is the compensation plan that we're working on right now, and so Phase, Phase One is the job analysis piece, where we worked with directors and employees to create standardized job descriptions. One of the areas that I noticed when I first got here is we had three or four different templates, we now have one, so that way we've created a standardized process. Phase Two, that one, that phase ended on December 31st. What we were doing is we're gathering market data. The difference between what we were gathering now versus what we gathered before when Evergreen was here, they gathered about 10, we've got about 20, and we looked at both county partners here in North Carolina, as well as some of the other areas such as, you know, Austin and, you know, it, I think one of the areas that I think it's important to note is that even though Austin isn't really Asheville, what we have used is some of our other business partners throughout the county. Rusty is one of them, and he actually took the, the rates and he standardized things so that way all things are equal. Phase Three is what we just finished on December, January 31st, and really what that phase was, was an equity study, and what we did was we took every one of our positions, every classification, and we ran it through the EEOC guidelines and their data metrics to make sure that, what we were focusing on was looking at gender and race, to make sure that we didn't have any inequities there. And what I'm really happy to say is, we had no issues. So on Phase Three, that was great, we, we found no issues there. We also, in this phase, we looked at when it came to market, were, were all our positions actually being paid in accordance to the ordinance? So did they meet the actual minimum of that grade? So, Phase One, or Finding One, was that we didn't have any equity issues. Phase Two finding is that we did have six employees that were, were of concern. Four will be needed to be addressed, and two of them, when we actually did a deeper dive into the, the data, what we found was two of the employees were part-time, and when you actually looked at their wage and the hours that they worked, they were fine within that grade. Finding Three, classifications, we found 27 issues with classifications, which include 89 employees. Now, I do want to step back for a quick second, just so that way you know, when we started looking at the positions, you know, we looked at all 1,500 employees on, and all of the 275 classifications. When we looked at the classifications, if we had only one employee in that classification, you can't, there's no reason to look for it for equity. So it was two or more positions that we looked at. So our continuing work, we're now looking to move into Phase Four, but prior to doing that, we need to finalize and get approval for some of the actions we need to take for Phase Three, and that really is identifying the, identifying and fixing the classification issues. We need to establish a new compensation grading system using job families, analyze the market data that we've received, and develop a multi-year plan for how we hope to fix all the problems that we're finding. I think, you know, this is by far the biggest, Phase Four is by far the biggest lift of this, this compensation study, and so we do have, we're working on, I should say, the charter right now, and we have a lot of milestones in, in this phase, so, but we're hoping to have all our data presented to the county manager no later than December 31st. Immediate next steps. So for your awareness, Phase Three compensation changes, there's 31 employees that will need compensation changes, and that equal, equals to $53,256. There is no budget amendment that is needed. We can actually absorb the, these compensation corrections in our current year lapsed salary, and we're asking that this is to be effective on March 1st. So for your consideration, I ask that you approve the use of lapsed salaries to fund these classification findings.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or a motion?
I move to approve the use, to, I move to approve the use of lapsed salary to fund the classification findings.
And I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is a budget amendment for Buncombe County Detention Facility Strategic Community Opioid Response, and Jennifer Barnett's and others.
Oh, can we introduce you?
Thank you for being with us, Sheriff.
I'm actually, I'm going to turn it over to Sheriff Miller. Glad to have him here this evening to introduce Sarah Gaten, who will be the program coordinator with the MAT program, and then I'll come back to do the budget amendment.
Okay, terrific. Thank you for being with us, Sheriff. How are you?
I'm really just passing it on to Sarah, but I just wanted to be here to support her and support our program, and also to thank each of you for our MAT Medical Assisted Treatment Program that you have supported thus far, and so we're only here to ask for an amendment, and so without further ado, we'll turn it over to Sarah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We do have slides. So we're thrilled to be here. It's been about a year and a half since we last presented, and the question becomes, how did we get here? As many know, that Buncombe County was disproportionately impacted by the opioid crisis. I guess I'm in charge of this. Disproportionately impacted by the opioid crisis with deaths per capita. This is in the state, but also within the nation, and interestingly, our prescribing of the medications which are known to be able to treat the opioid crisis, we prescribe at a lower rate, in the lowest percentile within the state. So while we're higher, we have a higher impact, what we're doing to prescribe to treat is at a lower rate. So in 2018, or there was, in 2018, a 15-year study was released on formerly, formerly incarcerated North Carolina inmates, and what that study demonstrated is that individuals leaving detention or leaving prison systems were at a 74 times higher likelihood of overdosing of heroin post-release. And within two-week period, 40 times more likely to overdose from all the different types of opioids combined. So this is very, very alarming. This study led into our program here at the detention facility, and we wanted to know what our death statistics and correlations were with our community deaths. And so in joint partnership with the Register of Deeds and Health and Human Services, we were able to draw all of our data together and analyze what that looked like here in our local community, and the findings were astounding. What we found, we started data from 29, or 2016, 2017, 2018, so we had three years initially, and we found that over 50% of everyone who was dying in the county at one point was passing through our building, through the detention center. And of those persons that were dying and passing through, over 50% were leaving within a 24-hour rate. And so that told us that our window to intercept and provide services was very, very small. And then shockingly, over 50% of the people who were coming through our building and dying, were dying within one year. And so now we have a number of years worth of data. We have four full years. 2020 is incomplete, we're still waiting for the fourth quarter to come back, and we haven't yet gotten the data from 2021. But on that four-year average, what we see is an average of 92 deaths a year in our county. So if we break it down, 57% of those individuals who passed had moved through detention at one point in time. 61% of those individuals on a four-year average were only there for 24 hours. And you can see the one-year statistic through the four-year average, over 62% had died within one year. So that's astronomical. That, that data really told us that our detention facility is a crossroads to be able to work with people who are most at risk and provide some life-saving measures and treatment. Also in 2018, the National Sheriffs Association released a publication of the value of MAT in jail and detention facilities. They acknowledged that these buildings really are the epicenter to be able to confront and treat people with best practice, gold standard, proven methods, right, that treat the addiction. And so here we are, the Strategic Community Opioid Response Team, we launched it, that's a photo of our very first team there, minus Sheriff Miller with his T-shirt. But the goals, number one, we wanted to impact the overdoses, right? See what we could do to support the reduction of overdoses in our community, impact jail, our jail population and lower risked activism, provide these life-stabilizing treatment interventions, as well as utilize the 21st Century policing strategies, which, one of those is data-driven practices. So this entire program has been launched and built off of these data components that we've been able to, to gather. So some significant milestones in our programming. We're screening everybody who comes into the building. Number one, when somebody's walking through the door, we're asking them if they are an opioid user, and what that does is it triggers a resource sheet handed to them, and also prepares them with the overdose reversal kit when they leave the building. We're also screening individuals at the medical intake juncture, which is about at the four-hour mark, so if somebody's coming in, we're using that opportunity within the first four hours of them being there to educate them on what treatment resources are available to them, both while they're detained, but also once they hit the community. Introducing individuals to what MAT is, it was shocking how few people actually understand medication-assisted treatment. Individuals who are actively using opioids have never heard of it. A lot of professionals in the treatment world have never heard of it, so a lot of education. Education again to the recipients, potential participants of our program, education to the providers, education to our own staff. We do opioid reversal kits provided to every individual who reports opioid use in the building. That's a significant service that we do, and that's been in partnership with the Health Department as well. We have re-entry supports, looking to connect people with the resources that they need to stabilize life, everything from housing to employment, recovery, community, anything that's going to help folks move forward in their life, as well as peer support services, and that is up to one year after their release. Now, peer support, if you haven't heard of it, it's an individual who has lived experience. So our peer, Samantha Brawley, she is one of the most inspiring humans I've met. She has worked in and out of her own addiction, found stable, long-term recovery, and she speaks to our participants very candidly on the journey. So we have a number of peers that work with us in partnership on the re-entry side, and then again, appear nested in the medical center with our, with our program. So some quick numbers there in regards to the person served. We, pre-COVID, would see about 120 opioid users coming in and out of the building and make the medical intake junctures, so that does, did not account for the individuals that were just walking through and released after they got their charges. So anybody who was staying for any length of time, about 120 per month. When COVID hit, that number went down to about 80 to 90 per month, so our volume is very, very high. Even across the state, our numbers are much higher than our other counties. We're providing case management to folks as able, this program was unfolded in phases, so Phase One really focused on data collection. Phase Two, we were able to hire a case manager and a peer, so they started screening folks and providing that case management at that time. We do serve a number of pregnant women, some come in already on the medication, others we introduce them to the medication as well. And then we've been able to introduce a number of new patients to the medication itself, so as they step out, they are better equipped and more prepared to, to work through their recovery process. And then training our staff as well and providing RCA to our staff, that's, that's a large part of our service. There have been some significant challenges, obviously COVID set us back a little bit, but we've been able to figure out how we could launch anyways during that time, which has been really exciting. And then there's a lot of stigma that is associated with addiction, with recovery, both internally of individuals who actively use drugs. There's actually stigma with them about using a medication to help them work through recovery, so providing education to that population, to our own population. The law enforcement community has got a lot of stigma, right, that we have to work through, and even in the recovery community, professionals that are providing recovery services, there's even stigma there. So those are some of the big barriers that we're really starting to focus on now here in 2021. Some really precious pieces of data have come out of this program, and it's important to note that the, the data is, we have these very small data sets, right? So as we gather data, we try to interpret it as accurately as possible for the, the bits that we have, and then apply it so we can have a functioning program. But comparing the death statistics from 2019 to 2020, what we saw was a 15% decrease, and that is comparing detention deaths to the community deaths. So the number of deaths that we had in the community, that number came down 15% between 2020 and 2015. Now, it's hard to interpret that, the whys behind that, we did enter into COVID, so we don't have enough time to be able to do a solid analysis, but that number went in the right direction, we were very pleased to see that. One year of data showed that our... One year of data showed that our individuals who are on MAT, when they come into the building, have an average length of stay of three days. And this is really significant on a number of levels, because the average length of stay overall is 18 days. So this number here tells us that individuals who are on that treatment already and do get arrested are leaving at a much faster rate than the average population. So this has a lot of optimism regarding jail population and keeping our numbers in check. Sir?
Why might that be? Tell me more.
Yeah, so when somebody's on the medication, typically they've got more stability factors in their life, right? They're working through addiction, and, and so their, their addiction likely is not driving crime that's, that's leading towards arrest. They've got typically housing, they typically have jobs that are enabling them to pay for their medication. Overall, there's more stability factors than an untreated person who uses drugs.
They might be able to bond out more likely?
As well.
Rather than sitting in jail because they can't afford a $500, a $1,000 jail?
Yep, that's a piece.
One example.
Yep, that's one example. The risk assessments that pretrial use are asking about jobs, stability of housing, those factors lend into the judge's determinations on release. Prior to launching into our next phase of starting new patients on medications, we were looking at our volume at this point. We were in the middle of COVID, and so we had to determine, do we have the capacity within the building with the restrictions that we're operating under for safety to introduce a new population and more of a workflow? And so what, what arose from that data analysis was individuals who were already on MAT recidivated at a rate of about 12%, while untreated opioid users were recidivating at a 30% rate. Now, this is also a really interesting number. This is only nine months of data, and at this time, when we analyzed this data, we were only counting people who were on the medication. We weren't actually continuing it. And so these people were not getting active services. This is just a raw count, no services rendered. What's the number telling us? And so with, with very limited outreach, we saw that 17% decrease in recidivism, so that was very exciting. So where are we, where are we today? Program, program movement, working to refine the current services that we have in the building, and also continuing to evolve according to our population needs and the feedback that we're receiving. One really exciting extension of our programming is the Community Advisory Panel. This is a group of about 10 individuals in the community who have a history of arrest, active addiction, having been in and out of the different types of treatment and recovery programs that communities offer, and they provide active feedback to us of what it was like to go through detention, to go through detox. And they, they give us very relevant feedback that has actually impacted and influenced the direction that our program has gone, and we've made changes accordingly. So this is a really powerful component of our program. We have a lot of active collaboration and some new collaborations that are getting ready to launch, some exciting ones with the Child Support Divisions and Pretrial as well. We're, we're super thrilled to see how that continues to unfold in the months to come. And then a number of cross-disciplinary partnerships. We've worked very closely with the Health Department over these past number of months, starting to work with the Post-Overdose Response Team, the Community Parent Medicine Team, creating workflows, how can we support each other's work, and really tighten the communication for the benefit of our community, because our populations do overlap. And then some exciting things on the forefront in regards to our program evaluations, figuring out how can we continue to, to analyze this data in a way that's accurate and constructive for future evaluations. So again, 2021, we're really focusing on those death numbers. How can we bring down the correlation of people leaving detention who are dying in the community, because this is where we have that impact? Increasing our training, both within the, the recipients of our programming, educating them where they can access those resources, how they can effectively connect with the resources that are available to them, training our own staff, training medical, and working with the community as well. The partnerships are very, very important. This is a Strategic Community Opioid Response Program, because we understand that within the detention facility, if we just operate as a silo, then our success rates are gonna be much, much lower than if we strengthen our relationships and our, our continuity within the community, and then effectively linking our participants to this medication and other, other resources that help them do well in life. So we were identified by the state as a recipient of this grant. We're in our second year of funding at this point, and we do anticipate a third year of funding. It's been $283,000, which has been split with our partners in programming. So a lot of folks ask, how does programming actually enter into the jail for a person-specific approach? So this is more of a general overview, less specific to the MAT program. So if a person is wanting to provide services to one of their clients, it typically comes through one of two portals. It will either come through our reentry case management or our diversion team, or it will come through our medical contractor. And so those two teams will receive those referrals. They're brilliant about teasing out and identifying who the best reentry resource is gonna be, and they filter those, those clients, those needs down into the reentry portal. So it's a really unified work. Those two teams work really close together, have great communication, very effective in their work. And then lastly, this diagram is just a spoken wheel model of how our team receives the, the, has the, the various clients, and then they refer them out to the respective appropriate resource in the community. We've got a lot of partners. Buncombe County's a wonderful place. Everyone is here because we wanna be here and does great work, and especially working together. So again, a lot of collaboration with Health and Human Services, the Justice Department, a lot of collaboration there. We've got a number of private sector partners that we work closely with, and then the new budding EMS teams. So as you can see, our goals, they align really well with the 2025 Strategic Plan of Buncombe County, right? Lowering the overdoses in our community, working on that jail population and the recidivism, helping folks stabilize their lives so they can live well. And then again, incorporating the 21st Century policing. This is a photo of our, our peer Samantha on the left, for, on the right side, but closest on the left, and then Ms. Felicia, our nurse, and they're doing an orientation for our new employees, which has been a new strategy that we've been implementing for all of our new staff, really effective. So at this point, I'm gonna pass the mic to Dr. Goen. He's got a brilliant way of breaking down information, so if you have any questions, please ask. And without further ado.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'm Tracy Goen. I'm the Medical Director at Buncombe County Detention Facility, as well as at Swain Recovery Center out in Black Mountain, and the Women's Recovery Center here in Asheville. I'm an Addiction Medicine Specialist. I've been in practice for about 25 years, the most recent 14 back here in the United States. And I got involved in the medical work at Buncombe County because of Sarah and the team there. I was fortunate enough to be asked to help initiate this MAT Treatment Program. And it's, it occurred to me when Sarah and I were talking about getting up here sharing my experiences, I realized that treating opiate use disorder patients at Buncombe County is similar to practicing medicine in a bush hospital in the Nigerian jungle, which I did for 10 years. They're similar in these ways. They are the two places where I have seen the most impact made, and where I have seen the greatest potential for change, not only in individuals, but for the society. They are also the two most fulfilling professional experiences I have, I've ever had. And lastly, they are the two locations, the only two locations where I've seen practicing medicine, where I have seen grown men and women break down in tears when they are offered help and a treatment that can save their lives and change their lives for the better. So I see, I have seen a lot of correlations there. And now, most of our patients, as you can imagine, they're pretty calloused from years of being stigmatized. They're hardened from a life of revolving in and out of prisons and jails because they have a disease, a treatable disease, that has been proven by medical research and science repeatedly over the last decade or two. And MAT is proven to be the key component, a key component, in that treatment. And the Sheriff's Office has put together an incredible team, as Sarah showed you, to treat these individuals with opiate use disorder. And it's been a blessing to see even some of the early results. When we explain to them that they're not weak-willed, moral degenerates, that societal stigmatization has told them, you can see a little spark of hope in their eyes. And then we educate them. We educate them that they have a genetically-based brain disease. You see a little bit more interest. While it comes down, they wanna hear more. We explain to them that their reward system is faulty. So their natural morphine, their endorphins, is, and are the receptors where those endorphins bind, is faulty. So substances, when they take substances, they have a different experience than the majority of the population, and it's because of a genetically-based difference, either in those endorphins, the natural morphine, or the morphine receptors, or the opioid receptors. So these people typically have gone through life with a dis-ease, a baseline anhedonia, uncomfortable in their own skin, and the first time they take an exogenous opiate, man, the lights come on. This is it. They feel right. Now, the beauty of buprenorphine, the medication we use in MAT, is it binds those mu-opioid receptors. And when it does, it activates the receptor. People feel normal. There's no craving, there's no withdrawal, and they're not impaired. They're actually very, very functional. The other advantage of this is that it has a strong binding affinity. It binds that receptor, it binds it strongly, has a long, a long half-life, it stays on there a long time. So even if they go out and they decide they're gonna use, they're gonna figure out real quickly, even though we tell them, they're not gonna feel it. Because it, it has such a strong binding affinity, it'll kick heroin off of the receptor. You could actually use it almost like Narcan, essentially, if you had to, but it's a whole different topic. So as we share these facts with these patients, you can actually see their humanity begin to shine through that thick veneer of shame and guilt that has been laid down by years of stigmatization, demonization, and marginalization. They start to feel like they're back part of the community. You see a little bit of glint in their eyes, usually through tears, has been my experience sharing with them there in the jail. And you can see a little bit of the fear begin to dissipate, because nearly every patient that I've had at Buncombe County has admitted to me that they know the minute their foot hits that pavement outside the jail, they're gonna wanna use. And they also admit to me that no one has ever offered them help to deal with that desire. So now we do. So MAT provides them a sense of security that as they step back out into the world, they know they have a medication that's gonna prevent them from craving drugs, and they know now they have a team behind them that has already arranged the continuity of care for them. I've actually been fortunate enough to see a few of the people come out of Buncombe County and show up over at Swain Recovery Center, or the Women's Recovery Center, as they have progressed and taken the next, next step in their recovery, and they are full of gratitude and hope. So I'm here just mostly tonight to thank you. Thank you for supporting this program that is changing lives, it's saving lives, and it's bettering our community. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of those, as far as how the medication works, or...
Okay, thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Or is there a motion to approve the budget amendment and extend the one-year grant-funded position as long as the grant funding is available?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the grant funding and extend the position as long as the funding is available. And just, if I could, just additionally, just to say a tremendous thank you to Sheriff Miller, to Ms. Gaten, to Dr. for sharing the work you've been doing, but really just the substance of that work. It's pretty extraordinary to see what you've built in this time, and I know how much hard work it's taken, and it's very powerful and inspiring to see the ways it's, it's impacting people's lives in our community. So thank you all for your leadership, and not just kind of following a formula, but really doing the extra work to figure out how to create a Buncombe model that I think is helping the people of Buncombe County. So just an aside with the, with the motion on the floor.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I would just also echo, it's a tremendous amount of progress and accomplishment, so thank you all for your very innovative and important work. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Yeah. Thank you. Very impressive.
All right, next up is consideration of a budget amendment for the Inca Heritage Greenway, and Jennifer Barnett's gonna help us out again.
Yes, good evening. So this request will be two related budget amendments, one for the Capital Projects Fund, and one for the Grant Projects, Ordinance for Grant Projects Fund. So in existence is the Inca Destination Grant. So this is the Greenway, and it's the grant that is comprised of some TDA funding support. A few fiscal year cycles ago, we moved all of that collective budget expense and revenues over to the Grants Fund. Lingering was a legacy project that existed in our Capital Projects Fund 341, which we referred to early in its existence, was the Inca Destination Grant. This is a request to basically move the $280,000 that exists in that budget to be pared over in the Grants Projects Fund, so that that project is fully and collected together. So it's an accounting. Our request, the $280,000 is part of a previously appropriated contribution.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Commissioners, are there any questions, or is there a motion to approve the recommended budget amendments?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is consideration of a budget amendment for other post-employment benefits, and Jennifer Barnett's gonna help us out again.
Yes. So this actually will be related to four different funds. I'll explain a little bit of the complexity related to this request. So our request is to transfer a total of $3 million from the Internal Service Fund reserves. The transfers would then be dispersed, really based on a per FTE allocation. So the OPEB contribution, so other post-employment benefits, the OPEB trust is a fund where the county needs to contribute, ideally on an annual basis, dollars towards our future liability for retirement obligations. We have missed that annual contribution in the last fiscal year 20, and then in the fiscal year 21 budget cycle. As the audit concluded, as we were able to evaluate the reserves in our Internal Service Fund, and we achieved some savings as a result of reduced healthcare claims out of the Internal Service Fund, so it's our Health and Dental Fund, we are requesting that we basically catch up, to some degree, $2 million is the usual annual, our ideal annual contribution, but we are asking to use those reserves, appropriate it from the Internal Service Fund fund balance, and disperse it out the way that finance needs to actually expense it out to the OPEB trust. And that is on a FTE allocation basis, that's why you see it with dollars that are associated in the General Fund, and then out to the Solid Waste Fund, and into the Inmate Commissary Fund, because those are all funds which house salary and benefited positions.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions?
I have one question, and it's just, thank you for that explanation, and this may be a question for Avril. In the auditor's opinion, the one thing that he said then, I think it was the opinion of the matter paragraph, had to do with the post-employment benefits and a change in accounting? How did that relate?
I apologize, I have not read the caffir to answer that question from the auditor's opinion.
Okay.
But I can look at that and get back to you tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
So I'm still a little unclear why these weren't... So I'm still a little unclear why these weren't done in the previous years.
So last year, it essentially is around expenditures, so we'd have to have $2 million of expenditures in the General Fund to be able to make that payment. So in fiscal year '20, as we, because it's generally a payment that's made towards the end of the fiscal year, so as we moved into the end of the fiscal year and we, you know, looked at basically reduce expenditures as a result of the pandemic, we opted not to make that payment.
Because the COVID, we were entering the COVID environment, and we were concerned about loss of revenue?
That's correct. As we concluded fiscal year '20, and then we were also in the fiscal year '21's budget planning, so we did not include it as a expenditure amount in the fiscal year '21's budget. But now, having concluded '20 and looking at the reserves, we would like to use reserves that are available in the Internal Service Fund to contribute towards our OPEB liability.
Is that the only time that we haven't, like, annually made a contribution like that?
There's been, I mean, there's been other years. There was a reduced, a reduced payment in fiscal year '19, and that would have been early in my tenure, but my recollection is, is that in assessing the year-end projections, that's one of those levers that, you know, you might pull because it's one of those, it's like, there's no absolute, you got to make the $2 million, but you definitely want to consider the future liability and that you're continuing to address it.
So it's one of those financial decisions that you can use to affect fund balance and manage reserves and things like that?
That's correct. What I will tell you is that Don is the Finance Director. It definitely gives him, it would give him pause and heartburn if we don't, you know, continue to try to catch that up or to make the payment.
Sure. I'm probably just asking because I don't remember us ever talking about this before, so I'm just sort of trying to get more information about it. Maybe we have, but I don't recall this being something that's come to the Commission before, so...
Yeah, I mean, my question is around just like what the consequences are of that decision being made in the past, but...
Right. Okay. Other questions or is there a motion? I'll make a motion, we approve the recommendation. I guess, is there a second?
A second.
Just, you know, just for sort of information, it's one of those things where maybe if we're not going to make a payment like this as part of the annual process, maybe there's some way to just disclose that or something? Because obviously, it's like in the long run, this is important, and I mean, doing something for short term doesn't sound like it creates a problem, but theoretically, it was, at some point, it would be a problem, right? So just maybe there needs to be some kind of mechanism where if it's not paid each year, there's at least a disclosure that it's not being done for cash flow purposes or other reasons, and so there's some awareness about it, but...
And we didn't actually budget it in '21, so we talked about it during the budget process, so we need to be more intentional, making sure you understand that consequence.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So just, please think about that. So, all right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the last budget amendment item is regarding the Register of Deeds excise stamp tax.
Yes, so at the February, I think it was 16th briefing, we were able to review the deed stamp excise trends, and so we are requesting that we increase the expenditure in the revenue budget for the Register of Deeds deed stamp excise tax by $800,000. What this enables us to do is, once we exceed the anticipated revenues, we need the expenditure budget to be able to pay, pass through back to the state the 49% share. So we anticipate additional revenue over the current budget.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Jennifer, for your help on all those different pieces. Commissioners, we need to discuss board appointments. The first is the Ag Advisory Board for Farmland Preservation. We've got one position open and one applicant, Annie Parkinson. I'll make a motion to appoint Annie Parkinson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The HHS Board, we have five members who are up for reappointment. All have served one term.
I'll move to approve to reappoint Lucy Lawrence, Jacqueline Howland, Yvette Jives, Johnny Grant, and Rachel Keener to another term on the HHS Board.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one appointment, and DK Wesley is recommended for this position.
Need to appoint DK Wesley to his position?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, as we discussed earlier, there is one position on the Historic Resources Commission. It's been advertised, we only have one applicant, as Commissioner Whiteside has mentioned earlier, so we need to make a decision about appointing that position or continuing to advertise for it, which is definitely an option as well. Commissioner Whiteside, do you think, you mentioned you might know some people who may be interested in applying?
Wait for the next meeting.
Okay.
Who would grow.
Okay. So it sounds like there's interest in continuing to advertise it for, for at least another couple, well, between now and the next meeting? Or Mr. Joyner, do you have a suggestion?
Just trying to be clear, so if we advertise it to the next meeting, does, and if we do get potential applicants, are we going to interview for this position? Well, then, we would just make the consideration to do the interview at the next meeting? Is that what we would?
I think that's what I anticipate. If there's additional applicants, most likely we would do interviews, but why don't we just advertise for a continued period of time, have it on our agenda for the next meeting, and see if additional applicants have come forward or not, and then we'll go from there? But probably if we have more than one, we would want to interview them.
Just real quickly, do you want to, when you want the interview, I mean, excuse me, the advertisement to stop? You want it to Friday before our next meeting, which would be, I think, the 12th? Or, so that would give us approximately about a week to advertise? So to fit, we can, I mean, as early as we could advertise, again, to start advertising, it would be tomorrow, obviously, but legitimately, it would still only be about a week of advertising.
That sounds fine. Let's do that.
All right.
All right, so yeah, if anyone knows folks who might be interested in applying, it's an important board. For anybody who's gone before that board before, you realize you want good people on it. So, all right, great. I have a couple of announcements. On March 16th at 3:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their next briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On March 16th at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session to discuss an economic development item, I believe.
Yes, sir. Pursuant to 143, 318, 11A4, we need a motion to go into closed session to discuss an economic development matter. Just expect direction from the board and no official action after.
So move.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and second to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As Mr. Bruce said, we don't anticipate making any decisions coming out of closed session. When we come back, we'll simply adjourn the meeting.
Okay.